Get your mic closer then.
Yeah, fix your mic.
Okay, thanks for coming out tonight, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order and we're gonna start with the pledge.
Pledge of the Statute of the Party of the United States of America to the Republic of British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I'll start with the approval. So, the approval agenda, um, any additions or changes, Paul?
Nope.
Dan?
No.
Ryan?
No.
No. I got a couple. Uh, we're gonna remove B1, uh, jury's not gonna be here tonight as a visitor. Uh, move C down to after the committee and, um, TIP presentation. And then we're gonna move the committee reports, uh, to before the public hearing for the TIP. I think that's a better order for that. Um, with that, entertain a motion to approve the agenda has changed.
Make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Ryan, do you have a second?
I'd like that second.
Thanks, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries, thank you. On to the consent agenda, any questions or comments for administration on the consent agenda?
Nope.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, do you have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Thanks, Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, thank you very much. Visitors, public forum. Was there another card that came in?
No, I think that was all the cards, wasn't it?
Yep, oh, is this the one here? Okay, alright. Alright, so, I got some cards here, um, wanna call your name if you wanna come up to the podium, just state your name and address, uh, share your comments. Um, typically, when there's been a subject of a public hearing at a prior meeting, we don't entertain more comment on that because it's not a public hearing for that, but tonight I'm going to. Um, so, just so, I'm waving that. So, first, Dwayne Burton, if you wanna come up?
Hi, folks, it's a little bit different being on this side of the podium. So, let me start off by congratulating Chris on this being your second-to-last meeting, so...
Can you put your name, your address for us?
Oh, yeah, you just stated my name, uh, Dwayne Burton, address 2001 11th Avenue Northeast. Uh, I'm here to talk about the comp plan. I don't have the same vested interest as the majority of the folks here behind me do. But I do have a vested interest, uh, as being a major adjudicator in the development of the first and current comp plan. Uh, considering that, uh, we put greater than a year's worth of discussion, had multiple public hearings to get to this final document, I think it's important to understand that change to the plan should not be taken lightly. And specifically, it should not be solely reactionary to a developer's desire. I think a change to what is recommended as our three potential opens of specific property, um, considering possible action on, um, what's gonna happen tonight, to twelve different residential types that are permitted or are permitted with standards or other conditions. Um, I support the expansion of residential development, but change to the comp plan should be done after some critical thought. Um, more importantly, I think it's enough str- important enough that it should require a four-fifth vote for the change to occur and not by simple majority. So, uh, that's it on the comp plan. I, I just feel strongly that because of the amount of time, the amount of public input and everything that was put into this at the time of its development, making significant changes and potentially creating spot zoning, which potentially could be legally liable, liability, um, should be really thought through. Um, I was asked to come tonight, uh, because of the, what happened on Monday night. I wasn't in attendance Monday night, but I watched the video and it, it was less than clear as to how things were being conducted. Um, the video lacked clarity in how the meeting was being processed and formatted. Um, the discussion that was took place created a lot of confusion and I'm sure significant frustration in the audience. Just as a recommendation, having been on that side, I would recommend that particularly when there's three public hearings on the same project, that some time be spent at the beginning of the meeting to outline what each public hearing is about. Because it didn't happen Monday night and it created a lot of turmoil, I think, in the audience. And a lot of misunderstandings as to how the process was being going, so... Just my two cents, having been on that side and now on this side, so, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Ryan Buckingham? Is Ryan here?
Who?
Ryan Buckingham?
I didn't, I didn't wanna speak. I didn't check.
Oh, you just said you're a citizen of Ca- okay, sorry, I just have the cards, okay, got it, thank you. Um... Is it Kylie Smith, Kaylee?
Kay.
Kaylee, okay, thank you.
Good evening, um, Kaylee Smith, 607 12th Street Northwest, Casson. Um, so, I will let others point out the safety risks, lack of access, traffic increase, crowding schools and resources. I have a slightly different tone tonight. After the planning and zoning meeting, we were advised by a city council member to not speak of emotions but to use facts and that will stand out more. This was spoken to us after the same meeting where emotions had a board member tell someone she was full of crap and a city council member then at the same time told us, um, oops, sorry, a city council member, um... The same one who told us not to use emotions, said the city was too smart and too rich, so we should want the development to help bring funding from the state. Now, I am going to give the benefit of the doubt and assume both those statements were made with emotions considering they came from people holding power and if it wasn't emotions, then it was just rude. I will not apologize for the emotions that brought me to this meeting because the truth is, we are people who have emotions, we are not parcels, we're not just objects occupying a low-density area. We are humans, the same ones that pay the taxes around here, the same ones that are rooting for our community to succeed. Um, you're messing with their livelihoods and trying hard to lose the faith from your community and that will bring out emotions. Um, also for the too smart comment, I don't have a college degree, the too rich comment, I work two jobs to help ends meet with a $40,000 a year daycare bill. But I accept your apology on the tacky comment because I feel like I'm a good representation of the unpoor making your comment irrelevant, meaning not connected with or relevant to something. We were informed that the change of density was due to the fact that areas in our neighborhood that were high and medium density in last comprehensive plan from 2018 were changed to low density and things change as appetites change. I would like to point out that the city had included a business, local retaining law and payers as medium density. As far as I know, which is a lot right now considering a section today, he is not planning on developing his land and never has considered that, which means your labeling of this area as medium or high density could have just as been easily a mistake as well. Monday night, we were informed that from the planning perspective, low density is four units per acre. Medium density in the same space is just five more units that we would see. If this is correct, why then do we have thirteen single-family homes instead of eight? I believe if we were all to look a little deeper, it would probably be because guidelines for low density, which is just five units different, will not allow for this kind of development. But correct me if I'm wrong, I am not sure on that. Um, another thing I learned Monday is the fact that two of the members voting tonight already voted yes for this on Monday. But I believe that seems like a conflict of interest. I don't follow small politics close enough to understand how this is possible. Unfortunately, that falls on all of us here for not doing our research when voting. I promise I will do better next time. My last plug here would be to ask you all if you really think this is what Casson needs right now for growth. People wanna move to Casson for the small-town feel, not for the overcrowded and overly expensive townhomes. This development is not right for this area at all or this town right now. We instead should be focusing our strengthening, we should be focusing on strengthening our current resources so when we do get ready to the point for building a development like this, which is needed in this town, the town will be able to handle the impact that it will give us. Go comments.
Thanks, Kaylee.
Chris, may I speak for saying that to that, if you must? I, I know we don't typically, but I did say on Facebook I would apologize. I was the person who spoke very poorly at the meeting. And I adhered to that. I apologized to many people on Facebook, I apologized to the one outside the door. I, like many of you, is passionate about what happens in our town. I can't tell you how much time I've spent in these types of meetings. If you watch any school bar meeting from 2022 to 2023, that was me there sitting there recording it for you to watch. I care about our community too. I wasn't tactful the other day, but I will state again, the two number-one concerns for your school in terms of funding that we are a deficit in are compensatory funds. Watch the July 2023 meeting, I am correct, we make too much money as a meeting income. It's not your fault, but we don't get extra money because of that. Watch the meeting, I posted the numbers, watch it. I do apologize for my tact, but I don't apologize for that those are numbers that I can't change, so I am sorry.
Thank you for your name, I didn't wanna call you out.
No, it's okay, I, I don't mind being called out. I, I made a mistake and I can own up to it, I'm an adult, thank you. Sorry, I know we're not supposed to speak during this, but I wanted to apologize to all of you that showed up and I thought I should.
You should've.
Yep.
Alright, Teresa, Teresa on the mic?
Mike and Teresa Whitcomb, 3 Abbey Lane, Casson. As property owners in Stone Ridge Patio Home Association, our property directly butts up to the proposed development. And to say the least, we are extremely concerned about any consideration given to changing the zoning, zoning from low density to medium density. The proposal significantly, significantly changes the character of our entire neighborhood and poses a significant risk to our safety. The increase in traffic is a major concern, not only for the neighborhood, but for anyone that's traveling along the dump road. We are also concerned with the safety of our wonderful trail system and the potential threat that that brings to the individuals, including children, that are using that system. We, of course, are concerned about how this will negatively impact the value of our home. Anticipating a housing development, when we chose to invest in Casson by building our home here, we knew that there would be, uh, a development back there, but we never imagined that the city would change their mind and rezone this land. And we're extremely disappointed that that's even being considered. We're concerned with the quality of homes that will be built in this development. This developer is known to have built cheap, low-quality homes. Parking will be a concern and we're not supportive of a development that will be run down over time and not properly maintained. We will look out our back windows and we will expect to see the same kind of residence that we built in our association, not low-quality, um... Housing that's not maintained. Um, we expect that, um, we would have the same kind of development back there as what we have in our community. I think we all know what these developments can turn into over time and all we have to do is look at what other developments in other towns have turned into. And I really think that the leadership of Cass- Casson should think about what they're bringing to the community and the impacts are deep and wide, not only for our neighborhood, but for the entire community of Casson. So, think about what you're attracting to Casson. Um, what, what we need are quality residents, so we'll attract quality, um... We need quality residential areas that attract quality residents, add value to their community and will continue to grow in a positive manner. There are plenty of local development, developers right here in Casson who understand our community needs. And I would like to see that they are given an opportunity to develop this land as they have a vested interest in our community and how it will be developed and how it will grow. This developer's not even local, they're known not to build quality homes and they could care less about our community. I think once his pockets are lined, he'll be gone and then we'll just have run-down properties. So, please give careful and thoughtful consideration to our concerns and vote no when considering this rezoning. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Is it Gunner?
Hi, I'm Gunner Kruger, uh, 10 and 1/2 Abbey Lane. Uh, I don't have any prepared remarks, uh, just kinda shooting off the cuff here. But, uh, I am, uh, very concerned about the flow of traffic that this development will, um, will impact. You know, there, there doesn't seem to be a real good way to access the proposed community without going through some, uh, residential streets, on-street parking, young people all over the place. I drive school buses, I see how people act when they drive, there are a lot of people on their phones and they're distracted, they don't mean to make mistakes, but they do and I worry about, uh, the young people. Um, I, uh, we've already got kids and, you know, if you're on Casson, uh, online or whatever it is, you know, some young man is zooming around, uh, roundabouts and having fun and that's what young people do. So, uh, for, for that specific reason, I would, uh, uh, I, I, I am not in favor of the, uh, change to medium-density, um, uh, residential, uh, in that area. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Uh, Stasha?
Hello, my name is Stasha Sokwoski, I live on 1104 7th Avenue Northwest here in Casson, Minnesota. I, like many of my neighbors, share the same concerns with the development that is going in, the proposed development that's going in just north of our neighborhood. But my main plug in this, so I am a registered nurse, I am an emergency medicine nurse and an ICU nurse. Critical care is my bread and butter, saving people's lives is my bread and butter. My main concern with the development, not just this development, but the overall development of Casson, we're growing really quick. We're one of, Dodge County's one of the fastest-growing counties in Minnesota. And I feel like we really need to adjust our emergency medical services, um, here in Dodge County. So, like many rural emergency, um, services throughout the country, we are at risk due to funding. Um, Dodge Center Ambulance was in quite a bit of deficit, if I remember correctly. I think they billed Medicare and Medicaid over $2 million and they only, only got $650,000 back, which is a huge, a huge, um, deficit in their funding to be able to fund and run Dodge Center Ambulance. They only have one director, one assistant director, one full-time EMT and three part-time EMT slash paramedics. The rest is volunteered, paid-on-call staff. Then there, the other ambulance service in Dodge County is Hayfield Ambulance. They cover nine townships and three cities and they have sixteen staff members and then numerous volunteers. I do know that West Concord Ambulance had to suspend their daytime ambulance services due to the lack of staff and volunteers available. So, if we are at risk of losing Dodge Center Ambulance and we're the biggest city in Dodge County, I feel like that's very concerning if we continue to grow at a rapid rate without addressing... And I know it's a very hard thing to address, it's a state level, it's a federal level, all of that. But if we continue to rapidly address or grow and we don't address basic needs for people that are here now or that are moving, I feel like it can be very detrimental to our community along with the fact that Casson Firefighters, Firefighters Department, we don't have any, um, full-time firefighters, which are also EMTs and paramedics, I believe if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're on-call pay. Um, they're not stationed at the fire center, um, so... And then, one statistic that is alarming and it's in a federal, but in Minnesota, approximately half of the certified EMS, EMTs, paramedics in Minnesota are not currently working. So, they're certified, but they're not working because they're burnt out, retention rates are really low. Um, like I said, I work in emergency medicine, we're always waiting for a rig to come get someone, to transport them to a bigger hospital. I work in Olatana, so I work in a smaller rural hospital. So, I know what it's like to be waiting for essential emergency needs. And I feel like that's something that really truly needs to be addressed in our community before we continue to expand. Um, that's really what I have to say about that, thank you.
Thanks, Stasha. Okay, Christina, Screeden?
Good evening, um, I did it, my name's Christina Screeden, I live at 1103 5th Avenue Northwest. I didn't get the tip to stick to facts, but I think what I have is important to say, so I'd like to share it. Um, um, I, my name is Christina Screeden and I live at 1103 5th Avenue Northwest with my husband Eric Screeden. We have been residents and homeowners of Casson for over thirteen years. We have two children, one in the elementary school and one in the middle school. Life brought us to Ca- or Southern Minnesota, but love brought us to Casson. Love of the small town, love of community and love of the lifelong connections that we've made here. Staying in Casson was important to us when we decided to move a little over a year and a half ago from the northeast side of Casson to the northwest side of Casson. Like anyone going through the home buying process, we laid a, we weighed a lot of pros and cons and did our due diligence, working with Tim Merrick and finding our new home. We had asked several times about the undeveloped property just to the north of us, the same property being discussed here tonight. We, it was explained, single-family homes would be put there and it was zoned as such. Had this proposed change in zoning been discussed, we would have never purchased the home on 5th Avenue Northwest. Adding so many families with the proposed 108 rental townhouses will add astronomical traffic to an area utilized by so many in town who already do not live in the neighborhood. With the 16th Street in front of the new QuickTrip not completed, with plans to be completed this next spring, um, and 5th Avenue and 12th, 5th Avenue Northwest and 12th Street Northwest, they're used to navigate to 8th Avenue or Northwest, or as we call it, the Dump Road. I work from home and have my home office in the front of the house and all day long I'm able to see the constant barrage of traffic. Adding such a large concentration of families to a plot of land zoned for single-family homes is unsafe for everyone. The traffic largely never yields at the intersection of 12th Street and 5th Avenue. In fact, they rarely stop for pedestrians either. Which is why I walk my elementary daughter to the school bus every day to ensure she's able to cross the street safely. Already, this is a problem. Now add hundreds of additional cars to that mix, knowing that 108 rental townhouses will have more than one vehicle per family. Additionally, worth adding, Mantleville Avenue, the morning and evening commute with taking out the stoplights and adding the roundabouts, don't worry, this won't turn into anti-roundabout talk, uh, but it has made turning either direction on Mantleville Avenue during the morning and evening commute much more difficult with nothing to break up the traffic. Again, adding hundreds of cars to that situation, that's already a major concern. Raising our children in a small town was something important to us and something my husband and I didn't experience growing up. We grew up in the suburbs, Apple Valley and Eagan respectively. With the proposed increase to zoning for this property, our schools, which are already overloaded and still struggle to staff adequately, will further burden these issues, impacting all students and families already attending the Casson-Mantleville schools. Additionally, we want Casson to remain the small town we have come to love and cherish. Adding such a congested population to the heart of the town goes against everything we love. Families wanting to live in Casson are absolutely welcome to purchase one of the many single-family homes already currently listed for sale. Work with contractors to build on property being discussed today as it's zoned currently for low-density in any other of the open properties around town. Furthermore, Windsor Court had recently discussed expanding 85 affordable homes and building a community subter. This is also another option. Above and beyond the traffic and school concerns is the property tax implications of all Casson residents. Already, our property taxes are higher than our families who live in the aforementioned suburbs. Suburbs with more amenities and better school districts. If these 108 rental townhouses are subsidized, we, the homeowners, will be hit with even higher property taxes with no additional benefit, not to mention met with lower, uh, property valuation. The property, or the proposed plan back in May was passionately opposed by residents and tabled by the Planning and Zoning Board because of the very real concerns and impacts of traffic, schools and taxes. While moving the exact same plan to a slightly larger plot doesn't rectify the real and raw concerns current homeowners have. I see no viable reason why this should be approved. It is worth mentioning before I yield the floor that having a property like this managed is so, so important. And since you are only as good as your reputation proceeds you, I worry about the reputation Trump Construction has using Lloyd Management. Lloyd Management reviews, um, available on the Better Business Bureau are awful and leave nothing to be desired for the town of Casson. Thank you for your time and serious consideration.
Brandon Buckingham? Is Brandon here?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Good evening, Brandon Buckingham, 1105 9th Street Northwest. I've lived in Tallahassee since 1973, went to Casson, Manerville, K through 12. My kids are going to Casson-Manerville, they'll graduate from Casson-Manerville. I've spent a lot of time on Manerville Avenue and Highway 57 and I know how much traffic is there. I know we just finished a project on Highway 57 and it's better, but I would not wanna see any additional, anything additional above and beyond low-density housing in between the north side of Casson and Manerville. That corridor is so busy, trying to get in and out of there, and we're gonna have some fantastic trails. We'd encourage even more kids to go from the west side to the east side and they're gonna be crossing that mess. My argument is simply against the traffic. I know we need affordable housing in Casson. I just think it probably needs to be closer to Highway 14 because you have a lot of people heading that direction anyway. And I just don't wanna see all that traffic around those schools. You've got all those fantastic athletic facilities, it is unbelievable the traffic around there. We've got the Zed School over there now, we just have too much traffic on that side of town and I just wouldn't wanna do anything to encourage more than what we already have. Thank you.
Linda? Linda Fields, sorry.
Good evening. Good evening, I'm Linda Fields. I live at 13 Abbey Lane. And unlike many others who've lived here a long time, I just moved here two months ago. Um, I grew up in Rochester, but I have family here and I got to know this community through my family. My, my son and his family live here and I'm just so impressed with this town that I wanted to spend my retirement years here, so I bought a patio home here. Um, understanding that that would be developed back there like others here, but as single-family. Because there is, I live right on the road, my backyard's on the road on 5th Avenue. And there's traffic there, it's, it's manageable, it's doable, I knew that, and it's fine. Um, and single-family housing certainly would bring a little bit more, but the assumption would be that there'd be roads back there that would offset some of that, right? Now, the proposal is to put in like 121 units. So, you know, do the math, a lot of cars and no infrastructure to support it. We've heard a lot of concerns about safety and it's real. Um, I, you know, I came into the meeting, uh, the planning and zoning meeting, not really being aware of what all this project encompassed, so I asked a lot of questions during the meeting and after the meeting. And I understand that there's really no road structure being put in place before this would even be built. And that's just unacceptable from a safety standpoint. There are, except for the patio home community that I live in, it's all young families, we have young kids. And these people have, there are times in their life when they've invested in these homes to stay there long-term and raise their families and go to school here in Casson. And you're gonna force some of them to have to make other decisions because it's gonna not be safe. Um, there's a young girl across the street from me, I know her dad walks her, she comes over to my house to play with my grandson. He walks her across the street now because she has some disabilities and may not hear what's going on, right? So, um, you have to really think about the safety piece of it. You know, usually when you do a development like this, you, it's a thought-out process where you plan infrastructure and then you look for, what do we wanna put? you plan infrastructure, and then you look for, what do we want to put here, right? Do we want multifamily housing? What are we going to do? You know, the person who spoke that was on the council previously, who was involved in the comprehensive plan, made good points. Why put all that effort into getting input from the citizens and then change it? I never even got a notice. I think some of my neighbors did, but I never even got a notice that this was happening. So if it wasn't for my neighbors telling me about it, I wouldn't have been known to come to the meeting. So I think you really need to think about that. The other thing I'll just mention is, I actually owned property in Rochester. I was part owner in it. And it was multifamily housing, but everybody owned their own units. And when people owned those units, they were very well taken care of. That place was immaculate. The yards were nice. There wasn't junk laying all around. The units themselves were kept up. People got along. Everybody worked for a common goal. As soon as people started to move on, the association changed their rules and let people rent, and the place started to really deteriorate. And unfortunately, I still own that property, and it's been not a fun experience. So those are my comments. I hope you'll really consider voting no on this project and sticking with the original plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goldschmidt?
I have a couple of questions that I think others in the audience here might have, and that is, I'm not clear on how a TIF would work. I've looked at it and tried to understand it, but I really don't understand what that would mean for the community and for Mr. Schram with the development. So if we could talk about that sometime tonight, that would be great. And then, on Monday, it was discussed that the median home price would be brought down by the rentals, and I'm trying to understand that as well. I've researched it, and all I can find is that rentals take the pressure off of the housing and bring the property values down. So I'm really curious about how that would work. And then I'll just say that I have shared concerns with the rest of us here tonight related to the development. I've been thinking a lot since Monday about Mr. Schram stating that he has similar workforce development properties that have been very successful, and I feel concerned that the definitions of success for Mr. Schram and for our community could be very different. I strongly feel that we need to vet Mr. Schram's commitment to his developments, maybe not the affordable housing, because it sounds like the affordable housing and the workforce developments are different. But he has said that he does have similar workforce development properties, and so I think we should look at those and get voice of the customer from the cities, the residents around them, and the tenants to see how the developments have impacted traffic and property values around the developments, how the buildings and roads are being maintained, and what the tenants have to say about the property and the property management company they rent from. The city seems to me to be looking for ways to increase the number of residents in affordable properties in order to decrease the medium home value in the city, and it seems like we're waiting for developers to come to us. And I don't know that we've, like, have we worked to develop partnerships with developers that might work for the benefit of the community. I'm not sure that Mr. Schram is the right person for the community, and I just don't know what has been done to vet that and make sure that he is. I also worry about the number of developments happening. Bigelow has single-property homes going up. There's mention of the significant expansion in Windsor Court, and there's another apartment building going up. And I feel that measured steps should be considered to take time to evaluate between the completion of each of these projects and how they impact our community. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
All right, that was the last of the cards. One second here.
Can I make one more comment?
I'm sorry, I didn't really plan on speaking, so I didn't have anything prepared. But one thing is that what I was told at the last meeting was, the reason that Cassin needs this is that it helps to bring in business, and Cassin wants to bring in some business into town. I think we should bring the business in and then look for the workforce, but set that aside, that's not really relevant. What is relevant is, if you bring in small business and restaurants, their pay is not going to be extremely high, right? I mean, a server in a restaurant is going to make minimum wage or less. I asked Mr. Schram what these will rent for. Eighty percent of these homes will rent at $1,800 a month, twenty percent at $1,350. I don't know about you, but $1,800, if you're working in a small business in retail or in a restaurant, it's going to be a stretch. So I, you know, I know it's not affordable housing, it's workforce housing, right? And I know there's a difference, but I think that is pretty significant. So what problem are we trying, what are we trying to solve here with this? It was brought forward, I understand, to be done over northeast at a smaller scale, and that didn't get approved. So I'm not really sure what we're trying to accomplish here. And I think others have made the comment, there needs to be more thought, and the last speaker brought up really good comments of, let's do some due diligence and find out what do we really need, what builders would want to do a project, what can we do at a smaller scale that will help achieve whatever the goal is that we're trying to achieve.
So we moved the committee reports up. So the first one is a comprehensive plan amendment for the Reagan addition. Brandon, do you have, want to review that first? You have some stuff to go over on that?
Go ahead, maybe.
Or Ian?
Committee, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Traffic stuff if you're interested.
Okay.
Yeah, so on Monday night's planning commission meeting, we did hold a public hearing to consider the comprehensive plan amendment. I'll just show up on the computer here. A second. Not that one, the other way. Okay. Make it bigger so we can all see. All right, so it's this piece right here that we're talking about this evening. You can see this yellow color designates the future land use as low-density residential, which I explained covers a housing density of anywhere between zero to four housing units per acre. And considering the size of this particular parcel and the number of units being proposed here, it places the housing density at 4.15, so just within the range for medium density, which can go anywhere from four all the way up to 12 units per acre. So in this case, considering the scale of this property, that's the difference of five units between what you could see for low-density and medium-density as is being proposed here.
Can I interrupt?
Yes.
Basically, if we took five houses out of this, this is a moot issue.
I would say so. From the housing density perspective, it would fall into the low-density range if we removed the...
They still couldn't build the townhomes as R1, though.
Okay, gotcha.
It's just that the spacing of the parcels is big enough that it stays in that range.
Got it.
Is that correct?
Well, the type of housing falls more under the planned unit development, which includes the actual rezoning. This that we're talking about right now is just the comprehensive plan amendment, which has more to do with the density of units.
Okay, so my point was, though, if there were less units, by not that many, we don't have to change the comprehensive plan.
I would say no, because it falls within that range for the density.
You don't see what I'm saying? So it's like, so five units, too many, and we have to change our comprehensive plan.
Right.
Five less units, and we don't have to.
Yeah, I would say so.
Keep going. Sorry.
All right. Let's see. So after the public hearing, the planning commissioners did vote, and after that, the result of the vote was four to three, a split vote, although a majority of the commissioners did vote to recommend approval of this comprehensive plan amendment. And so that's what's being presented to the council this evening.
I mean, I think it's interesting, if you look at that, I mean, obviously, that area that's orange and black was intended for high-density, and so, and Councilmember, former Councilman Robertton will remember, I don't know if he recalls why that was not implemented, but I think that, you know, I think what I took out of that meeting watching the video was that you're basically shifting that higher density to the north side, where you allow people to build single-family in the higher density when it wouldn't have been originally intended for that. So, okay, just to confirm that. Anything else you've got, Ian?
No, not unless there's any questions from the council.
Okay. So if there were five less units, we would not have to vote on the change in the comp plan?
That's what I would say, in my opinion. I did propose adding a condition of approval on the comprehensive plan amendment, though that would be contingent on getting all the further approvals. So if this proposal goes all the way to the approval of the final plat, then it would officially go through, but if not, then it would remain as this low-density residential designation as it is right now.
Okay. Anybody else got anything?
I understand the concerns about the density. When, and I doubt very, well, perhaps the Realtor did say, here's the comprehensive plan. Here is why I can tell you with assurances that this will always be four units per acre. And if that is the case, then I can understand why the homeowners that are present tonight had some expectation that that would remain no more than four units per acre. So I can understand their anger about it. I think that there have been a lot of, a lot of misperceptions about the status of the school as far as overcrowding. My understanding from speaking with school officials is that we're actually flat to declining in terms of enrollment. So we, in theory, do have room for additional students at the school.
Let's, we've already had a chance to speak. Let us continue here, and we'll talk later.
Just clarifying, having discussed this with folks at the school, that is my understanding, not trying to make things up out of whole cloth. I did ask the questions. If it's a matter of shaving five houses off of the development and thus staying within our original comprehensive plan, I think that is something that we should be exploring.
That should be, yes. Continue.
Also, I would like to know, because I don't remember when Stone Ridge Two is the property there that's in the orange and in the dark brown, correct? Dwayne, do you remember at all why that was changed?
Anything north of the current townhouses are out there, and the gas line at that time was undeveloped. This was an area close proximity to the extended care facility out there, which is already a high-density. So at that time, the discussion made sense to continue that in that particular area since it was undeveloped. However, you know, with that said, if you've got a higher density, you potentially can go to a lower density. We're talking about going from a low-density to a higher-density, so...
No, I understand that. Obviously, that's why we're here tonight.
Yeah.
But what I don't understand is why, or did we make the decision? Because I was involved in many of the meetings about developing the comprehensive plan as just a regular citizen. I was not on council when this was done. But what was the decision behind allowing the property that was zoned for medium and high-density to go back to single-family or low-density?
We'd have to go back and...
The engineer can answer that for us.
Yeah, if I could, just want to clarify some things. I went back and looked at the plat, so that area was platted in 2019, so that would have predated the future land use plan, which was pulled open here. So the lots were already established, so that dark area there, the higher-density residential, likely wasn't going to happen, because it was already plotted as single-family. Now, why it wasn't built until after this, I don't know that answer. So it was ultimately planned in 2019, and our comp plan probably should have showed that as single-family residential.
I just, I remember when we were working on this comprehensive plan, there was a definite need stated by just about everybody in town for higher-density rental property or higher-density housing that was more affordable for the average citizen. And I remember a lot of folks saying, we don't want this in this residential area, this residential area, put it as far out to the north and west as you can get it. And that was a lot of the logic for why those areas are the way they are. In the intervening years, the city has grown by leaps and bounds, as many of you pointed out. And a lot of what this council and previous councils have tried to do is make sure that our growth stays in line with our ability to support that growth. So a lot of, like, the sewer plant, the water towers, things like that, that we have put in place are intended to support and encourage this future growth, because if we expand the tax base, then we all share more or less in the burden, as opposed to getting socked for future development. Is that, Dwayne, does that line up with what you recall as well?
Yes.
So I guess, bottom line for me is, I understand the concerns about the density. If this is what I saw and this is what I based buying my house on, I get it. But if it's a matter of shaving five houses off of this development to get it to conform with the plan that was in effect at the time that these developments were done, I think that's something we should explore.
I did call the superintendent today. I did see a lot of concerns, heard a lot of your concerns. I wanted to reach out, as someone who not only works in the school, but someone who sits here, I wanted to understand what his thoughts were. So I called Mr. Ins. He called me back. We had a 15, 20-minute discussion. Typically, in a single-family home, you might see a .7 number of students moving into a household, is his estimate. In a development like this, you might see an average of one to maybe at a high two. With that being said, if we add 40 to 60 students in the next three years in that area, at roughly 8,100 is what the state is giving us now for funding, 8,100 times 40 to 60 students is quite a bit of chunk of money. Our kindergarten classes are at the lowest they've been in many years, stagnant actually, going down. Our community yet is definitely overpopulated. We can all agree on that. They're taking over parts of the elementary school. But the middle school and high school, he does believe can handle those numbers. So he didn't have a concern, he actually sees this as a positive. Many of the meetings he has gone to within the state want these type of facilities so that they can bring students in. Those students bring in revenue for the school district, which allow them to hire more teachers, which allow them to find space. They have space in the middle school and high school. Elementary, if you get 40 to 60 elementary students, yeah, it's not going to be a good fit, right? But we can't predict how old the kid's going to be when their family moves to town. You can't really do that. So in his opinion, it wasn't a bad idea, because it's going to bring in revenue for the school district and bring in students for a district that is seeing a decrease in student population, and that's across the state.
Paul Newman?
Back to the comp plan zones on the future land use. I don't mean to argue with you, Brandon, but the comp plan I have in front of me says 2018, so if that was platted in 2019, this would predate the planning.
Oh, yeah, my bad.
But anyway, the fact is, is that the entirety of... And at the time of the plating, we apparently had an appetite in town for more single family than we did for the medium density and we chose to change that. Um, and now the situations have changed. Now there's more appetite for the median density, um, than there is for the single family in this particular area we're looking at. There's also single family going up across the road, across the dump road already. Um, we built, I think there's, there's two apartment buildings, maybe a third down on Veterans Memorial that are filling in. Those are medium density. My understanding is that those are filling up fast.
It's weightless.
Or they're, they're, they're full before they're even done. So there's obviously a need for this. Um, so as far as changing the comp plan, in my opinion, like we reduced it down because that's what was asked for at the time by the people who were here building the roads and building the houses and now they're here again and they're asking to bring it up. And honestly, being only five units above what it could have been is a pretty small ask compared to what it, if it would have stayed medium or high density there, what could have been there instead.
Good. Dan? Nothing? Zero? Okay.
Could I just ask a question?
Yep, really quick.
Um, you're saying to bring it down to, to four. Does that also, is that just pertaining to the single family homes or does that also pertain to the townhouse he said he wants to put out?
It would cover the whole platted area, there'd be four units or less per acre.
Of the townhouse?
For everything, yep, yep. So for, just so everybody knows, for this specific discussion we're having is just on, do we want to amend the comp plan or not? It's not about, you know, approving the development or anything else, it's just, do we want to amend the comp plan for this part of the discussion?
I would also amend that Ian's point of, let's only do it if we go forward with the project.
Right. Because it can all be done conditional upon.
Yeah. We can leave it the way it is if we don't end up going through the rest of the process.
Correct. So on just that point for the comprehensive plan. The person I think that sets a bad precedent, we, we have to fix what we've already not done with the Stone Ridge, um, or we should update that to match what it is. Well, I mean, we're not going to, this is, this was 2018. So, but personally, if we're, if we're that close to four units, you know, or five units comes off, and we don't have to amend the comprehensive plan, I think that's a better path in my opinion. Again, that's just, I'm one, one vote up here, so that's where I, I stand on the comprehensive plan. Like Mel said, I'll back with Mel with the process when we started that back in 2017. There was overwhelming demand for diversity of housing options in Cassin. Um, and we've worked for the last seven years diligently with wherever developer wants to come forward. We have a lot of really good, good developers, but not everybody does every type of housing. So some of the developers that are local don't want to build certain types of housing. So, um, so there has been a lot of planning and work go into this. It wasn't something that came up on November 1st and we just decided to do it at the end of November and, and shove something through. So there, there's been a lot of planning for years on this. So with that, I will, if you have any other discussion on that, I'll make the motion that we, I guess, don't amend the comprehensive plan that if it goes forward, it needs, if the project would go forward, it needs to conform to four units or less per acre to be at the top of the, the low density as it's, as it's plotted for right now.
Twelve second.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Have, I do have one question.
Yep.
Have we changed the comp plan in the past?
Yes.
Yep. And did we change it? We, we changed zoning and everything for that?
Okay. Which ones?
Uh, well, the council's made a number of revisions over the last five years to the comprehensive plan, including a large-scale rezoning of a highway commercial, just, you know, we did a lot of that.
And I can, and I can see, I can actually see that, you know, we, we have done in, in certain situations. My issue with this one is, is we're point one five units off.
True.
We're not, we're not saying, it's just debt, you know, no, you're not going to do it, it's, it's just a stone wall. I mean, I think we can work together with the developer if this would get approved on the conditions that would be, uh, on it, that we're that close. I think some of the other stuff we've changed, it was gone from commercial to residential or the highway district. It was, it was major changes because comprehensive plan was started in 17, finished in 18. You know, that's six, seven years ago. A lot's changed in six or seven years. I think we've all gone through a lot of crap in the last six, seven years that none of us anticipated would come up in 2020 or after. Um, and a lot of things changed. Um, so I can see, yes, we've changed some things in the past, but the things we've changed have been pretty major things and not just in a, a small little change. So this one here, point one five units per acre, I don't know why we amend the, the comprehensive plan for that. And that's just, again, my opinion, I'm one vote. So we do have a first and a second on the floor to not amend the comprehensive plan that if it goes forward, it needs to fit within the four units. Any other discussion, Dan or Paul? Ryan?
No.
Okay, I'll call for the question. Are all those in favor of not amending the comprehensive plans? Did I?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so Paul? Okay, so four to one, that passes. So we'll continue on. So with that, the comprehensive plan is not being recommended to be changed at this time. Council can take that up in the future if they'd like. Uh, planned unit development for Reagan addition?
All right. I'll just bring up the right files up here. Okay. So with the PUD, considering the council has denied the, um, the comp, comp plan amendment, um, we'll move forward under the assumption that there'll be, at the minimum, some changes to this plan in terms of the number of units. Okay? So we're all on the same page on that one. Um, but the planned unit development process now has to do more with the zoning. So right now, today, this property is zoned DH Development Holding, which is the baseline, um, zoning district that property gets put into whenever it gets annexed into the city. This particular piece of property was annexed in 2021, I believe it was. Um, and so since then, it hasn't developed yet, obviously. And so now that we're talking about a development of it, it's the appropriate time to talk about, um, a possible rezoning. So with this one particularly, we can talk about the different zoning districts that are proposed. Um, first of all would be an R1 district. So right to the south of here would be the Stone Ridge subdivision, which is all R1 single-family residential. And so what's being proposed here is to, um, expand that R1 single-family residential district to include all of the lots here that are on the south side of the proposed 13th Street Northwest, um, where you see the single-family homes. Um, so again, an expansion of the existing R1 single-family residential district. Now to the north of that, where we see all of the townhomes, um, then it gets a bit different. So, uh, because these are, uh, these particular townhomes, they're like eight or four units on one lot each. There's no like property line to separate, so you have like one unit per lot. Um, that's important because it means that these are considered, um, multifamily, even though if you look at it, you wouldn't really necessarily know if there's a property line going in between them or not. Um, but just because of that simple factor alone, um, that means that it would be appropriate to zone this type of housing in the R3 multifamily residential district. Um, so basically the 13th Street Northwest would be the dividing line between the expanded R1 residential, single-family residential district and the R3 multifamily residential district. So those proposals would be to the based zoning districts. Now on top of that, a planned unit development, um, we refer to it as like an overlay district. So basically that just means that there's additional things about this particular proposal that may deviate from, um, the ordinances as they would apply to properties that aren't in a planned unit development, but we've done, um, um, review of it and we believe that, um, under a PUD, it could work successfully. Um, so what all does that include? Well, it includes, um, private streets, for example. Um, these wouldn't be the only private streets that exist in Cassin, of course. Um, all of South Fork, for example, is in a planned unit development, those are private streets. Um, same as being, what's being proposed here, north of the 13th Street Northwest. So, um, this horseshoe and then there's a few internal streets as well, um, to, to provide access to the townhomes. So 13th Street and then the connections to, uh, Seventh and Fifth, those would all be public. Um, and then the horseshoe and interior streets, uh, private is what's being proposed here. Um, additionally, um, due to the reduced width of the interior streets and then this horseshoe is also proposed to be narrower than what's typical for a, a public street, um, there's some, uh, provided off-street parking areas in between the townhomes. So you can see, um, in between the eight and four unit townhomes, there's some off-street parking that's proposed. Um, let's see what else. And then up here in this northwest corner, this is the proposed community room that would be available to, um, the tenants of the townhomes specifically. Again, that's a typical thing that you see with planned unit, planned unit developments is some sort of community room space that would be available as well. Um, and then one other important piece of the PUD has to do with the lot widths, which is another factor of PUDs in general, um, that they can allow for certain developments to occur where a strict interpretation of the city's ordinances may result in something that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Um, and so according to the city's ordinances, for a four-unit, um, townhome, the lot width is dependent on the number of units, whereas for an eight unit, it's just a straight, um, 70-foot lot width at the street line. Um, but for the four-unit ones, the code says it's more of a calculation based on the number of units, um, specifically 40-foot in width per, um, per unit. So four times 40 is 160. So to a strict interpretation of the code, that means a four-unit townhome should be on a wider lot than an eight unit. And so basically, that just allows for a more efficient use of land according to a planned unit development than what you would see without a planned unit development. Um, so that's essentially all the different pieces of the planned unit development on this map that I wanted to talk about. Um, it also affects landscaping, so I don't believe I showed this particular exhibit on the screen on Monday evening. It was included in the packet, um, but I just wanted to go over it tonight. Um, this is the landscaping plan, so, um, all the dots you see are different types of trees. Um, and then what may be hard to see on this plan but shows, um, down here, where am I finding it? Uh, oh yeah, right there. Some, um, foundation plantings around the outside of all of the, uh, townhome residences. Um, this will help with aesthetics. You don't always see this level of landscaping detail in, um, non-planned unit developments, but it is an important piece to discuss. And then this here is the phasing plan that's proposed. So phase one is everything on the west side. Um, so you can see it includes, oops, you can see it includes a portion of the single-family residences and a portion of the, um, townhomes. And whereas phase two of the proposed development here on the west side includes a, a bit larger amount of the townhomes and, uh, the rest of the single-family homes down here. And this dashed line through the middle is the proposed dividing line between phase one and phase two. Um, so you can see that there. Phase one would include a connection to Seventh Ave Northwest and phase two would include the connection to, um, Fifth Ave Northwest and then the 13th Street Northwest, which would connect all the way out to Manorville Avenue, Highway 57, um, to provide a third point of, uh, access to this proposed development here.
Can I just, if I could ask a question? It does not get done until phase two, which could be three years from now, correct? 13th Street?
Uh, I believe it was one phase per year. So 2025 would be phase one and then phase two, um, in 2026.
All the traffic will come down.
We'll talk more about the roads.
Yeah, we'll talk more about that.
We'll cover that.
Um, and then this document here is just the description of, um, additional flexibility. Most of it I've already touched on, um, but yeah, so that's, that's what I've got for the planned unit development. If there's any questions from the council.
Was there also some type of berm behind the single-family homes that separate that from the Stone, the Stone Ridge homes?
Um, yeah, it's not shown here. Um, there is a retaining wall that's proposed, um, running along the entire length, I believe.
Are the single-family homes slab-on-grade or are they basement-based?
Um, I think it's written somewhere.
I saw, we had pictures sent to us of homes that are built around the, the multiplexes. They look like they were slab-on-grade, so I was just wondering if that would be the same or if we would be having basements in those homes, in those single-family?
Um, good question.
Troy, you have any idea?
Do you have any idea, Troy? Let's see.
If Schram construction does this, does the construction, it would be proposed slab-on-grade, but we are working possibly, well, potentially with another purchaser of the lots.
Sure.
And that could be with base.
Okay. I just wanted to, as we got pictures of houses that you had around there, I just wanted to confirm what it might look like. Thank you. Is this where we can talk both the road? Or I don't want to overstep where I can ask questions or not.
I think what we're looking at here is the allowance for the PUD or not.
Okay.
The plat itself would be something would be.
The plat will be the next conversation. That's kind of a weird thing, but this will be, do we want to go forward with some type of development?
Inside of a PUD.
Inside of a PUD. Then the plat comes next as far as what's inside that development, as far as.
And so if we.
We, if we vote yes on the PUD, that just goes us to the next phase and then we talk more and if we can't.
Five minutes, we'll talk more.
Okay.
And I'll also just mention briefly that this is the preliminary PUD, so there is also a final PUD approval process, but that's determined by the council specifically. Um, so it is possible that there could be some slight variations between preliminary and final versions, um, but just wanted to mention that piece as well. And then, um, similar to what I had mentioned for the comprehensive plan amendment, but you could add a condition of approval on it, that it doesn't get, um, approved until the final plat approval, which I think makes sense in this situation. Um, yeah.
So we could move to move forward, but nothing's final until the final plat's approved?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Is that all you had on that one?
Yeah, unless there's any other questions from the council.
Any other questions for Ian?
So just to make sure that I am crystal clear, because I'm sure some folks in the audience probably, a plan, a PUD, the whole purpose is to allow slight deviations from what we have in our code to allow for a better use of the land that is there.
Yeah, generally, yes, yes.
Sorry, I'm sorry. My mic is kind of all the way over here and there's a, there's a wood piece right here. That's why I'm all the way over here. Um, the purpose of a, of a. The purpose of a PUD is just to allow slight deviations from what our city code requires to allow for the best usage of the land within the development.
Yeah, I would agree with that. And in this case particularly, and in other cases, it also importantly includes the rezoning aspect itself. So going from the development holding to actually R1 and R3 with the planned unit development overlay.
Does this PUD then have to have that five less units since we just talked about that, no matter what?
That would be more of a matter controlled by the comprehensive plan amendment. This would be strictly a zoning matter and.
Yep.
Yeah, we'd have to conform to the four lesser.
Yes, okay. Because that was a point earlier, okay.
Yeah, so visually, this will look different, but the actual rules that apply would generally stay the same.
Questions for Ian? Anything else, Ryan?
No, not right now.
Paul, anything?
Nope.
No.
Okay. All right. Well, we're doing all this conditionally, so I'll entertain a motion on the moving forward with some type of planned unit development to move on to the plating discussion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
To approve, okay. Thank you. We have a first to approve, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Dan, senior discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, on to then now the preliminary plat. Ian.
All right. So we did hold the public hearing for this one, also at Monday's evening. I'll just pull up the, nope, not that one. Let's see. If I open this one, just bear with me here. All right, and I'll just zoom in here. So this is the preliminary plat document that's being proposed here. So this actually includes the number of lots, the approximate areas of the lots, the, all the different utilities extensions. You can see the current contours. You can see the stormwater controls. You can see the wetland areas being preserved here and then the extension of the trail network throughout the site. So that's here. 13 sites for single-family homes, 18 sites for the townhomes, and then one for the community room. But again, because of comprehensive plan issue, we'll see a reduction in the number of lots and units here, most likely. But that's okay, because this is just the preliminary plat and we'd still have a final plat version to go through. And it's allowed to have some variations, but it's okay because we're doing less. Let's see. This one here is the grading plan. So you can see how the grading is proposed to change. These are all the contour lines, so you can see they're proposing to flatten them out for all the different townhomes. Let's see. And then this gets more into the actual proposed construction plans for the building of the public infrastructure. Yeah, let's see. Yeah.
So just one comment to start. So this is where we can, if it would go forward to go to the final discussions, nothing's being decided tonight. So is this where we could put on what we would recommend or ask for conditions on the plat?
I think that would be appropriate, yeah.
Okay, so one of the things I would like to see is if it would go forward, because I won't be here when you final approve or don't approve, is that the road to the east of the 13th would be a condition to be completed before the Phase 2, if it were to go forward.
When you mean completed all the way to 57, correct?
The 13th, there needs to be another outlet before Phase 2 is done. That's just my two cents that if it were to go forward, that's just some, I would, again, I'm one vote, I can suggest that you will vote on it later if we decide to approve it or not.
And we've talked about not, we don't build roads for businesses. They come in and do that. We've talked, well, in the past, I agree, we need to have another outlet. Definitely, I like that comment.
And I'm that same idea. I'm against the private roads, because if these ever become back to city, which could happen, they're not into wide enough for our equipment. So could they widen them out and make them a public road? It's not many more feet. Will it fit? I don't know.
That's going to be part of the final plat process, if that's something we want to put on as a condition. The only tough part about that, and I agree, because that's what the thing with South Fork, when they've asked before, hey, will you take the city? Well, no, we don't, you didn't build it to city.
And it could just be the three around the horseshoe. The ones in between the townhomes could still stay private, because.
But if we're going to approve a planned unit, I should rephrase that. If you guys are going to approve a planned unit development in 2025, part of that planned unit development is it's private. So if it's private, they're maintaining it. Again, put whatever conditions I want, that's fine, but just if it is a private development, you know, but I don't know how we can codify that we won't take it in. You know, some council 20 years come out and say, sure, we'll take it in, not thinking about plating.
It'll be their choice.
It'll be their choice at the time.
But it gives you a choice, whether you take it or not. You don't have.
Right. So it's, I'm torn on that. I mean, I agree. I don't like the short, the narrow roads either, but it is private, so how do you tell them it's private?
Because they had a discussion about putting on no parking signs, but how do you enforce that and?
That's their, it's private development, they, so, yeah.
That was the biggest concern by the fire department.
Yeah, the fire department, Joe mentioned that, was the accessibility. He'd mentioned that in other projects too, that went over by the elementary and middle schools. He didn't like that single roadway. If we did eliminate five units, can that, can those widen out?
Sure.
Does the community center count as one of those units?
I don't believe so.
Towards housing units, no.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't used as a way to get around everything there.
No.
I do agree with the 13th all the way through. I just think it's so important that it gives people access points. We still have 16th Street. It puts a large burden on any developer who's going to develop that, but we need to have routes to get people around town and 57 is congested. If we can at least spell out where you're turning onto 57, I've lived, I lived in northeast, I've lived in northwest, it is hard to get through town in the morning, at the end of the day, at work time. So if we could get that 13th all the way through, have 16th, you're really going to see spreading out of the traffic. And that is one of the biggest concerns I heard on Monday, was the safety in traffic. And going all the way to 57 from 13th may alleviate some of that traffic. We can't control how people drive on the streets, but if we provide them one, they can use it.
Question, is 13th going all the way through to 57 or to a backage road that would go up to the north of the roundabout? Because is the state going to give access to 57? Because they've.
The state's likely going to give access to 13th Street, but with conditions which will likely include turn and bypass lanes on Highway 57. So to make that connection is going to be, you know, pretty expensive from the developer's perspective. Maybe if the condition is, if second, if you're going down this direction, when second phase is built, 13th Street has to have a connection to 57 or 16th Street, let the developer figure it out. Because that is the ultimate plan, to have both connections. And they're just going to likely do one at 13th.
You could, yep.
And I think that would alleviate the concerns.
Okay.
Do you want it to eventually connect to 16th, because you're going to have businesses hopefully over there?
That is in the GDP that they submitted, yep.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Does 13th not go out onto the dump road or just over to 57? It doesn't look like it has an outlet onto the dump road, does it?
It does not have an outlet onto the dump road, no.
Can we connect to a county, without county approval?
You can ask. We could ask the county, but sometimes it's hard to, we could always ask, but.
Yeah, go ahead, Brandon. Speak to it.
So we've had some conversations with the county. The current plan is to leave 12th and then 16th Street, I think I mentioned it, the planning commission. And then the long-term plan, we're preserving right away at 16th for future roundabouts. We kind of want to concentrate our traffic to certain intersections, but as we're talking about tonight, you know, you need to ultimately have some second accesses. So no, there's not a proposed access out to 13th Street to the dump road. I think that the traffic is really interim condition. You know, we're developing on the spot that doesn't have 13th Streets that connect it to 57. But when 13th Street's punched through there, I don't think hardly any of the traffic's going to go to the south. It's all, the majority's going to go to the east. So I think it's a non-issue, maybe to the point of the council talking about requiring 13th Street.
If we connected it to the dump road, wouldn't that just give more credence for people to drive on it, to get through town? Right now, I wouldn't see a point to go that direction. I would go through 16th.
Yeah.
Would that add more traffic if we made that connection?
I would be afraid that it would, simply because, and hear me out, the reason I think that, I live on 4th Ave. 5th Ave is like a straight-shot raceway, north and south. And I think if you have this connect all the way through, you are giving people the right to just straight-through from east to west, through a residential neighborhood. 5th Ave scares the bejesus out of me most days when I, I don't walk my dog down that road, because it scares me. So I would have that concern if 13th were to connect up on both sides. I do think that having it connect up to 57 will probably route the majority of this traffic from this plant PUD out to 57, as opposed to down through your existing neighborhood. And we sort of found that out with Duane's neighborhood, when we were rebuilding the road into Chris's neighborhood. You guys were all concerned that once we put a permanent road through there, that people would be using your neighborhood to get in and out. And has that been the case?
It's been tolerable, yep.
It's been?
Tolerable.
I thought you said terrible. That's like.
You said terrible, too.
There's significant more heavy trucks going through with the construction that's going on up there in Lampoon's addition. But it hasn't been, to what the property owners, I wasn't concerned, but the property owners in the area.
Right. I mean, the only time I've accidentally come through there is when I missed the turn to get to the road and in the dark, got backwards, but, okay.
Conversation with Joel. I'm good. Good? All right. Any other questions for Ian or comments on the preliminary plat? Paul?
I guess disagree with the idea of conditioning the 13th Street be built. I don't, that to me seems like a lot of road to ask the developer to build, presumably a parcel that they don't own or have access to, especially since we're going to be asking to reduce the number of units they're going to be able to have. I would, however, I see a dashed line going through this, which I presume is the phasing.
Correct.
I'm in agreement on seeing if we can't make the roads full width and city roads instead of private. I would like to see 7th looped up to 13th and the 5th done in Phase 1.
Ian, can you zoom in, please? If you can see that better.
Yeah, I got my screen right in front of me.
I just want everyone in the audience to go see it better.
So that way, the two connections are done immediately instead of done in over two years. And then also, I'd like to see that the trail system for pedestrians gets done in Phase 1 as well, so that as people start moving into the first phase, they have some walkability to veterans and potentially up to QuickTrip and over to the school.
And I think that is part of it, isn't it?
Yeah, so I think that little brown line there is the phasing plan. I think on the south end there, I think the connection to 5th Avenue is going to be required just due to fire code and having one access. So I think that's a valid concern and discussion. Furthermore, the pedestrian connection going to the northeast, if you want to move up a little bit.
Yeah.
I think that's a fair discussion, because the city is committing to building 16 Streets next year and having a pedestrian connection connect to that point. So I think that that would be a valid discussion. You could maybe talk about the, I'm not sure if you're including Councilman Johnson, the trail on the east side, but that could be, you know, part of that conversation. We can go back to the development.
Yeah, because that's the one that ultimately will get back to veterans.
Yeah, the one we built this next year, you know, that's going to be a trail to nowhere to the south to our Veterans Park, yes, but we don't have a trail system there yet. But obviously, we'll be having some conversations moving forward. Furthermore, there can be a conversation if that, so the roads, I thought the loop rode around, the east and the west legs are built to city standards, current width and whatnot. The north one is narrowed up, but you can see that the trail is up along that roadway and that is ultimately flat, right? So that road could widen out and push that trail farther to the north. The area east-west, that's kind of no man's land, that's that big gas line that goes through there. We could move that trail, and as in some of my comments to consider, move that trail up by the stormwater pond and then use that area where the trail was to widen that road. I think that's very easy from an engineering standpoint, so something to consider too. Then you have a loop of public roadway through there. I think that was the fire chief's concern. And then maybe you still could leave those intermediate roads private potentially, because there's going to be fire hose connections on kind of both ends and of the public road. We can regulate the parking, which is the fire chief's concern. So I think that all kind of could work out and minor tweaks to the plan that probably has less impact with respect to building that as a wider road and moving that trail than, you know, per-unit basis. I think that'd likely be doable by the developer and staff, you can condition this and staff can reach out to the developer, we can have conversations. And if things don't fit or if there's a little tweaking, we can obviously bring that back. And we have a final PUD and final plat to approve too, so wouldn't be a major change if we do change those roadways, in my opinion, so.
Thanks, Brandon. And all of these paths connect to our safe routes to school?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, that dump road goes all the way to Manorville, comes back, 16th Street's built through. So essentially, right here, this development you can walk to, I think every trail in the town is all connected, so or will be.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anybody else on the preliminary plat? Anything else you want to see? Tim, do you have anything, Dan?
No. Sounds like a good lot of points there.
Brian, anything? All right. So with that, I mean, we've made some changes here by not, before, prior, not mending the comprehensive plan. The PUD is on the condition that, you know, plating's done. So now we're on the preliminary plat. I still like the condition of 13th being done either over to 57 or at least to the far enough to the east to connect to 16th, to have some kind of, call it eastern exit before you finish Phase 2.
Could it be either all the way from 13th to 57 or connected to 16th?
Correct. You can go to the east, because it's eventually going to bend to the north to 16th and then keep going to 57. As long as it gets to one of those, so there's an outlet to the east. 13th should be, you should be able to get out of that neighborhood to the east and not have to go south. I think, just looking at it and conversations with Brandon, the traffic will be better if you have that versus not, in my opinion. And I understand the cost that Councilman Johnson was saying, but really, we still need to have access to it and to be able to get out of it and not have it all go through the two streets. That's just my personal opinion.
Does it come, if we don't add access, does it come back to what was happening in northeast?
Yeah, I go up in the neighborhood where I lived, we had one way in, one way out.
Yeah.
So when the snow blew in 2000, what was it, 14, the road was closed for two days and nobody could get in or out of the neighborhood, because there was no other way out of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
So rather than go back in 20 years on something that was platted for a road that should have been done in 2002, we had to go back and then we had to hear the feedback that, you know, all of our kids are going to get killed on the bike path if you put the road there, you know.
I watch.
Legitimate concerns, you know, I get it, but it should have been done the first time. We have an opportunity to do it right the first time. We should take that, take advantage of it.
If we did request that, if it's not 13th to 57, it's to 16th, we're still going to want eventual connection though, from 13th to 57?
Yeah, that's the.
That's later on.
Long-term plan, yep.
Okay.
So that's a condition that I would want to see on there, myself. Anybody else have anything?
I think we need a second access point to, like you're mentioning, yeah.
Okay.
I like that. And then just if we could look at making that a public street just for the fire safety.
Loop?
The loop, you know. That's, would be nice, just by what the fire chief was saying and.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to forward on the preliminary plat to planning and zoning and staff to work with the developer, with the condition that 13th Street needs to have an access to the east before Phase 2 and that the loop, what I call the horseshoe, whatever the road. before Phase 2 and that the loop, I wanna call it the horseshoe, whatever the road would be, all wider than what the PUD would normally have to have access for fire. So I'll make that motion to proceed with the conversation. I'll look for a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Would an alternative access to the dump road rather than going to the east be acceptable? Are you just looking for another way out other than going to 12th? Cuz it might be easier to get that permission from the county than it would be to build road all the way to the east. I'm not sure, I'm just wondering.
You're already spending millions to one road more.
Yeah, I mean, there's consideration with that. I guess I don't know the distance, I have to look at the distance.
I'm just concerned about putting a condition on being very specific. If the condition really is, we would like to have better access in and out, I think that would allow the developer to maybe be more creative in redoing their plan for us to review.
Yep, nope, I got it.
Would the developer have to work with the county or would we have to on that? If we, if that was a solution, would Brandon and the developer and the county get together? How would that go?
Yeah, we would work with the county, I mean, we have previously. County and MDOTs like it to come from the city, not the developers.
Yeah. What is your, have you had any conversations about adding one, another access point between the one that's already there and then to the north where 16th Street would be? That would be three access points with that four if you count the, well, I guess you wouldn't count the reuse center, but you have access, you have multiple access points within a half a mile there.
Yeah, my concern there is they may require turn and bypass lanes on a concrete road, which is very expensive. And then you're gonna end up having them, put them back on 57 with the MDOT projects. So that's why I was leaning towards going out to MDOT, seemed to make sense. Furthermore, you know, to the east, there was some development in front of us. We have a preliminary plat, so it's not like this is a cornfield where it's never gonna develop. I mean, it's gonna be developed in a short timeline and may.
Well, there's interest in that land, that the road would help with that, right?
Absolutely, we may have a, whereas the developer app discussion may not be there, but, which is, you know, developers can figure stuff out, too, sometimes, you know. Or we can come back if something else's.
I would say, Paul, I understand your concern, but I would like to see you go through with the access to the east. And if, for some reason, they wanna come back during the final plat process and the development, they can always come back and ask to amend that.
Okay.
I mean, anything, right, cuz we're not approving it, we're just saying, hey, let's go through with these conditions, see what you can come up with if they feel that's, they can't, and they come back.
I think.
Planning, zoning, or council to do that.
Connecting 13th to 57 benefits. One thing we've heard from a lot of you is that we want this to benefit everyone. Connecting more sections to 57 allows for more, oh, sorry. Connecting more roads to 57, even though it's hard to do at times with MDOT, would allow for spreading out of traffic getting to the schools, getting to 57 to get to 14, to get to Manorville. So, I agree, it might be nice to have another option to connect to the dump road, but in the long term, we wanna get our traffic from northwest to be able to spread out a little bit more to make those roads going from northwest to northeast safer. It might be better to have another road connection planned to go to 57.
Okay.
I will, I will second the.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to further the plat discussion with conditions of an access to the east and the loop or horseshoe would be made to the wider city specs. Does that, everybody understands? Okay. First and a second, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carries into 5-0, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for your input on that and thanks to the public for input on that. So the process is not over, obviously. So just a reminder that planning and zoning meets the second Monday of every month at 6:00 PM. Their agendas are put on the.
6:30.
6:30 PM, apologize, false advertising. The agendas are on the website the Friday before. There's videos of the meetings that are posted the evening over the next morning, so you can always watch what's happening. City council meetings are the second and the fourth Wednesday of every month. So if anything's recommended there, so those also, the agendas are on the website the Friday before with the packet and the agenda, and the videos are also public information. So if you wanna follow along or see that, you'll get updates on that regularly.
And then are we, are we doing the TIF portion? Cuz I was gonna say, I know a lot of folks had questions about the TIF side.
So, yeah, so next, we have TIF.
Yeah.
So, we've got two things coming up with two more public hearings, so you get another chance to talk if you'd like. So the first one's gonna be a TIF presentation from Mike Bubani, our financial advisor on bonding and TIF and that type of thing. So I'll answer your questions, somebody had a question on TIF earlier. Is she still here? Everybody, okay, everybody. So we're gonna, we're gonna have a conversation about the TIF. You learn about what TIF is, what it isn't. We're gonna have a resolution. If we pass that resolution to approve the TIF district, that's all conditional upon everything being, going through the approval process. So we'll approve that possibly if we do, conditionally upon everything else being approved. So, with that, and then after that, the exciting part of the meeting is gonna be our 2025 budget presentation, so make sure you stick around for that, too. So, Mike, you're up for the TIF presentation, bye, Duane.
Bye, Duane.
Well, good evening, council. Just for the benefit of the public, my name is Mike Bubani. I work for a firm called David Dron Associates. Our technical title is municipal advisor. We're registered with the SEC to provide financial advice based on financing, economic development, et cetera, as you mentioned. So, at some point tonight, the council should open up a public hearing. So I don't know if you wanna do that now or have me do a presentation first or.
I was gonna say, is, could you just give a presentation of first, you know, what is TIF? What it is, what it isn't, and then maybe a little bit of the details about ours? Then we can open the public hearing up.
And then I'll take questions, too.
If somebody asks questions at that point.
Yep. And that's just my plan. We'll start at the 30,000-foot view and then we'll work down to a granular detail level. So, just in general, tax increment financing is just a fancy name to say that we're gonna use property taxes in a different way. So, you know, ordinarily, the city, the county, and the school, you do your budgets, you determine how much money you need from taxpayers to pay for snow plowing, police, et cetera. And then everybody gets their share of those taxes to pay for those things. But every once in a while, a development will come forth and say, you know what? Because of the costs involved, we need a little help. And so, one of the tools that we can use is this tax increment financing, where we do not touch any of the taxes paid today. So the bare land, as it exists today, the taxes that it pays today, we can't touch that. So we don't lose any revenue. But what you do do is you forego the tax base that's created by the new value. So as these homes go up, the value goes up, all the property taxes get, go up. And those get paid, and the formulas in calculating the amount of those property taxes for all those units doesn't change. As far as the property owners are concerned, they're, they're just gonna pay it, just like anybody else. It's just that once it's collected by the county, how it's now doled out is gonna change. So, the amount of taxes that's associated with the original value, that will go to the county, city, and school as normal, but then all that extra money will come directly to the city. So it'll be all the new city taxes, it'll be all of the new county taxes, and it'll be a little bit of the new school taxes. The school, unlike the city and the county, actually has two tax rates. They have the tax rate that we all kinda understand, like the city and the county, but they also have a market value rate, which is their operating referendum money. We don't get to touch any of that. The operating referendum money, we don't get any of that. And so, when people say, well, you know, nobody's gonna benefit from this project right away, well, the school will. The school will benefit day one because there'll be more value to help pay for that operating money. And as you mentioned, any new students generates quite a bit of revenue. In fact, the school is probably more interested in the new students than they are the property taxes, to be honest. But nevertheless, that money comes back to the city each year. Now, how that money is used, once it's collected, is important. It can be used one of two ways. Because these property taxes are paid over time and the bills to build the development come in quickly today, it means somebody has to borrow money. Somebody's borrowing money, somebody is taking risk with the hope that those future property taxes are generated and paid, all right? In some instances, not here, but in some instances, cities go out and issue debt and then they help the developer by cutting them a check upfront. And then they hope to God the property taxes come in to cover the debt payments so that it's not a burden on everybody else in the city. That is not what's being proposed. In this instance, it's called pay-as-you-go. Developer pays for everything upfront. They take all the risk. All the city is saying is, look, you build what you say you're gonna build, you pay the property taxes according to when you're supposed to pay them, and if the county collects them and sends them to us, and you comply with the income limits, which I'll get to in a minute, then each year, we'll cut you a check back for a portion of those dollars that we collect. And we will pay you for a certain amount of time, or we'll pay you until we hit a certain dollar figure, whatever comes first. So let's say we've got a 15-year contract and we get to the end of 15 years and we had not fully repaid the amount that we said we would. No risk, doesn't matter. We just end the deal, the balance is written off. That's all on the developer's shoulders, it's not on the city's shoulders. Conversely, if we have a 15-year contract and revenues come in way faster than what we anticipated, if we pay them off the full dollar amount in year 12, then we end in year 12. We don't even go to year 15, we unwind the deal, it's over.
Right.
And once those deals are over, we can eliminate the TIF district and that tax base immediately becomes available the year following. And that's why TIF districts are used, is because it's supposed to be used for projects that would not otherwise occur, recognizing it's gonna be a while before we can enjoy that tax base. But then when it's gone, the very next year, you get to benefit from it. There are some additional benefits. Sometimes they can be viewed as a negative, sometimes they're viewed as a benefit, depends on your point of view. But you had talked about infrastructure capacity. If you have the water and the sewer capacity to take on this new development, then it's a benefit because what you have is all these dozens of new users to help pay sewer and water bills. So, while we're foregoing the tax base for a period of time, the school's gonna benefit day one and our enterprise sewer and water funds should benefit day one as well. Not to mention the touchy-feely stuff that we can't quantify, such as the additional economic impact of, you know, local investment and more people spending money at the grocery store, et cetera, right? Okay. So, there are different types of TIF districts. The calculations are the same, but the rules and the regulations are different. So we have TIF districts for manufacturing kind of projects. We have TIF districts for redevelopment kind of projects. And then we have TIF districts for housing projects like this one. And housing TIF districts are a potential long-year TIF district. You can go up to 26 collections, 26 years. And the only downside to the developer is that they have to comply with income limits. Now, there are different limits. If the project was single-family owner occupied housing, that's one set of limits. That's not the case here. What's being proposed here is that when we capture that entire area that Ian had on the TV as a TIF district, once that's fully plotted and new parcel numbers are assigned, all of those single-family homes, those owner occupied homes, the city's gonna kick those out. The problem is that we don't have the parcel ID numbers for those. So, but we do it by simple resolution. Once it's fully plotted and we've got the ID, the PIN numbers, simple resolution, kick them out. So those will be straight market rate and not subsidized. However, on the rental, someone had mentioned they'd seen the 20% rule, that is true. There's actually two levels they can choose from, but they chose 20%. And that's that 20% of those units have to be reserved for families at 50% of the median area income, adjusted for family size. And you have to round up. So if you have nine units, let's say, get built and you had 20%, you would have to have at least two, that would be more than 20%. But you, you can't do less than 20%. Can't be 19.8, so if you have to go over 20%, that's what you do. They don't necessarily have to have families in there, it's to their benefit if they do, but they just have to be reserved. That's all they have to do. So every year before, when I talk about reimbursing them, cutting that check every year, in the contract, there's a compliance form where they have to certify that those units have been reserved. And if they have, then you can cut them a check. If they don't, you withhold the payment, okay? And they have to comply with that for the duration of their contract. Now, TIF law requires that we create a TIF plan. I don't know, Ian, do you have the possibility of pulling that up?
Oh, I do. And we have a TIF that's just coming up with the Prairie Meadows, correct?
That's decertified at the end of the year, that's correct.
Yep, so, none of the areas close to, those of you that are in that area, Prairie Meadows was part of a TIF.
Yep. Okay, so here's this long, convoluted document. And what I need the public and the council to both understand is that the TIF plan itself is an authoritative document. It doesn't necessarily say what you're going to do, it just says, this is as much as what we are allowed to do. You can do much less than what's in the TIF plan, you just can never do more. And so when I create a TIF plan, I say, the city is intending to keep this thing alive up to the full 26 years. You may not, but we're reserving the right to do that. We're reserving the right to issue debt if we want to. We're not, but we're reserving the right. The reason we want the TIF plan to be more than what we're going to do is because if you don't, if you try to just go and real, you know, rub it right down to the nub and then something comes up, you have to modify the TIF plan. That means another public hearing and it means more consultants getting paid. So to avoid, to avoid the potential for additional costs, we go ahead and create the TIF plan bigger than what we need to provide the flexibility. The council is not obligated to do anything in the TIF plan, that comes with the contract. When you sign a contract with the developer, then you're locked into doing what you say you're gonna do. But that contract has to be at or below what the TIF plan says. Now, the TIF plan as written was based on the original development plan, which I think included three phases and more units than what we had talked about tonight. And the resulting budget that was built into the TIF plan would be based on that. I'm not suggesting we change that at all. Like I said, let's go big, right? But you'll never, you'll never need to use it, but it's there in case, in case something unforeseen were to happen. And in the future, doing, certain kind of modifications to a TIF plan does not require a public hearing and doesn't cost anything. So, putting in, adopting a resolution that says, we're amending the TIF plan to now say, two phases with X number of units, that's considered a administrative amendment. It doesn't require any kind of public hearing, doesn't have any consultant costs, you just adopt it. But we keep the budget just where it is. And then we don't lose any flexibility that way. So in the TIF plan, if I get you to scroll down to, it would be page four, but I don't know what PDF page you'd be on. I'll tell you when to stop, it's section seven. Right there, whoop, back up. There you go. So you see, based on the original three-phase development, we've got a $10 million budget. And when I get to talking about the specifics of the contract, you'll see that we're well below that, okay? So, but that's, we can't do anything more, we can certainly do less. And then Ian, now if I can get you to scroll way down to the back, and we're looking for exhibit two, it'll be just after the map. Right there, yep. Okay, so this is the comment that I made earlier, that any tax is based on the existing value gets paid, we don't get to touch. That's this exhibit, it's saying, this is what it is today. We don't get to touch any revenue associated with that. And we can go down to the next one? Okay, this is the actual, whoop.
Trying to zoom out.
Do better, Ian, come on. Yep, up, 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 right there, that's it.
Okay.
And can you scroll to the left and go to the top, a little bit more up, a little more. To the top, there, you're going to the top left. Basically, in the top left, what you see is the beginning value and the original tax base of the area and then what the increased value or tax base will be of the area as those phases were built. And then based on that, and then the current tax rate over on the right, we can go, now we can go down. And we can look at, you know, the projected tax increment that would be coming in over the life. And then, so you see the first bold line right in the middle, that would be the gross tax increment based on the full development. Then the city by law can retain 10% for administrative purposes. And that's what would be built into the contract. So on the far right would be the net revenues available to help the project if we. So on the far right would be the net revenues available to help the project if we needed it. And then if you scroll way down to the bottom, whoop, 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 just to that one page, the bottom of the previous page. Right there, you see that four point, uh, four million there? Bottom right, right where his cursor is. So I'm gonna just, can I, I'll talk about it. So if you look at this bar column, you see this nine point two million in net revenues available for project cost. Nine point two million over twenty-six years is not worth nine point two million today, right? There's a cost of money, interest, right? So if we were to discount that by five percent, the value of that nine point two million is four point four million in project cost today. And if you were to go, you don't have to do this again, because I don't wanna stress you out. But if you were to go back to that budget that I had up there earlier, in that section seven, you would see the subtotal of the capital cost was that four point four million. That's where I'm grabbing that from, is right there. And then the difference between that nine million and that four point four present value number is the interest expense in the budget as well. So Ian, if I could have you go down to the next exhibit. You're doing a bang-up job. Okay, this exhibit basically says, if the project was fully developed, fully built, and it was not part of a TIF district, so that that tax base was ready to be used to help pay for the levy, how much would our tax rate drop as a result? And it's basically saying, the city's tax rate would drop by about two points, and then you can see on the county and schools, a much smaller percentage, because their tax base is much larger than just the city's. But we know it's not gonna drop that much, because we already know they're not doing three phases, we're doing two phases, right? Okay, um, next exhibit, please. Okay. This is the exhibit, it's a required finding of the TIF plan, but it's the one that I always tell the council that is, it's bogus in my mind, because it's using assumptions and estimates. But what we have to do is, we have to make the finding that by using TIF, in terms of market value, we're getting more for using TIF than if we just let it go and let's see if something else happens, right? And so basically what we're saying is, the increased market value of the site, less the present value of the TIF revenue, and compare that to what would happen if we just didn't do anything. And the finding in the plan is, well, it's been sitting there like this for a while. And so without this TIF, it'll probably just increase based on inflationary value only. So we're doing far more, we're doing far better for using TIF in terms of market value. Just in straight up, financially speaking, we're doing better. So that's all of the major findings of the TIF plan itself. So now let me segue to the proposed contract. So the contract would allow, not the four million that we showed in the TIF plan, but would allow for the reimbursement of up to two point four one million of site improvement and public improvement costs, plus five percent, and it would be provided on that pay-as-you-go basis. So that's that number that I was saying, that, you know, regardless of the number of years, if we get to the end of that contract and we haven't fully paid that, doesn't matter, we end the deal. Or it could be that we pay that off early, in which case we end the deal right there and then. Right now, this is planned to be basically a, roughly a fifteen-year contract. And I say roughly fifteen, it's because I'm anticipating fifteen payments. But if you were to count the years, it actually goes longer than that. And that's because of the way property taxes work in Minnesota. So assuming units are built in two thousand and twenty-five, the taxes don't go up in twenty-five, the taxes don't go up in two thousand and twenty-six, they go up in two thousand and twenty-seven. That, that's year one, right? That's the first year of payments, and then fourteen more payments after that. So it looks like it's a seventeen-year contract, but it's really just fifteen payments, right? Now, what's not shown is, okay, this document, if you read it carefully, a big, long development contract, will point it out. But if you were to just go to my executive summary of the contract, what's not pointed out in the executive summary is that in the back of the contract, there's an exhibit called a TIF note that basically says, here's how much we're gonna pay you, et cetera. And the idea, and the contract says, we're gonna do two notes. The first note will be issued when the infrastructure is in place to serve phase one. And it says, the developer can provide us copies of paid invoices that they paid for those eligible costs, up to half of that two point four one million for phase one. And, and then we can start making payments on that first note. And then when phase two starts, we issue a second note. And on that one, they can provide whatever they can so that the combined of the two notes doesn't exceed two point four. So the first note might be smaller, and the second note could be bigger, or it could be fifty-fifty. It just means the first note can't be more than half, but the, both notes, once they're both issued, can be for the full amount, right? Recognize, these notes are under the same fifteen-year timeframe. It's not one note gets fifteen years and another note gets another fifteen years, because if they don't do phase two for five years, it doesn't matter. This is the incentive to do phase two quicker, because clock's ticking. So get in and get these things built so that you can get your full benefit of your TIF contract. That's how that would work. And as I stated earlier, they will have to provide every year, before you cut a payment, they have to provide certification that they're meeting those income limits that I mentioned. As far as what those income limits are, I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but I can give you a feel that it's probably in the forties and fifties, thousands of dollars for the, but it's adjusted for family size.
So what, if I could go person?
Probably, yeah. Single, a single person with maybe a kid or two.
Is that based on statewide average, or is it Onset County, or what's the?
You're in the Rochester, um,
MSA or?
Thank you, MSA, yep.
That's only on the twenty percent of the units.
Twenty percent of the units. So ultimately, when there's a hundred and eight, well, I can't do math in my head, but if you took a hundred and eight times twenty percent, that's the number of units that they're gonna need to reserve. But it's, it's twenty percent of the units that are actually constructed.
Twenty units, that's right.
So if you only built ten units to start, then we just need two for, for that particular year. So that number will flow as he builds more units.
Okay.
Okay, now I know this council is grizzled veterans when it comes to TIF districts, and I saw you yawn, so. So, trust me, I put, I put bigger audiences than this was asleep. So why don't I take council questions, and then, once we're through that, we can do the public hearing, and I'll take public, so.
Okay. Questions for Mike before we open the public hearing?
Not here.
Paul, go ahead.
Ryan, you don't? The only thing the public could really ask is, is that going to negative, is a TIF going to negatively impact them? And I, I think you answered that with a no?
No.
Yep, okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll open the public hearing. If anybody has anything they'd like to ask Mike or comments, if you just wanna slide to the side, Mike, they'll need to come up, state their name and address, and then you can ask Mike a question.
Mike, do you wanna sit by a mic if they ask you questions? Do you wanna sit by the mic?
Hi, it's me again.
It's you again.
Linda Fields, thirteen Abbey Lane. I don't know if the City of Cassin looks at this, but when you look at TIF, a TIF program like this, do you ever look at, how does that compare if you put the same number of homes in there and just sold them and just brought in the tax base versus the TIF? I mean, is this a better deal? Do we make more money in taxes on this? I would think not, than if people just paid their regular tax rate.
I don't think the intent, and not to get into big back and forth, but I don't think the intention is to, of the TIF district is to raise as much tax revenue as possible, or the whole development. It's the diversity of housing that we've had demand for.
Okay.
So it's just a different type of housing, and the TIF is available for that, or it's not available for the single-family.
Is the city bringing in less by doing a TIF than they would if they just, you know, did a normal addition and built houses and people bought the houses and paid the taxes?
See, does the TIF do the housing?
Yeah.
So are we taking, you know, is the net less income for the city in doing a TIF? Is my question.
It'll depend on how many houses went in and what the.
Same number of houses? You know, apples to apples, but the same number of housing, of homes or townhomes.
At some point, it'd be the same.
It'd be the same.
Because if the market value is the same to property taxes.
Okay, yeah, it's not gonna be based on number of units at all, it's based on market value. Now, you could say that a townhome unit, if you were to take, instead of, you know, if there's a building of four, that whole building has one value, but if you took the average per living unit, you could say maybe that value might be less than one full-size, single-family owner home. But multifamily residential, the class rate in determining the tax base is a one and a quarter percent, whereas a single-family home is generally only one percent. And in terms of, do we do a calculation on would we do better? It's also, it's not so much a calculation of would we do better for X, Y, or Z, it's also, you know, you don't necessarily have people pounding on the door saying, I wanna build a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot bottling plant. You know, I mean, developers come forward with what they wanna build. And I expect if someone had come forward and asked to do a single-family residential subdivision there, you probably would've entertained it. So, and if, and if you were to say, no, we think we can do something better, the risk you take is that you get nothing, and then you sit there forever with nothing happening. So I'm not saying that would happen, I'm just saying that's the risk.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that analysis got done.
Yeah, I guess it depends on market value and how many would it go in. So I guess there's really, I guess, no perfect way to.
Yeah, it's not apples, it's apples to oranges a little bit, but yeah. All right, great.
Just to, just to clarify, Mike, you said that a single-family house is taxed at one percent, but a multifamily unit is taxed at one point two five?
Multifamily units that are, you have four units or more, the class rate is one and a quarter percent.
Thus resulting in more taxable income for the city.
If the single-family home had the same value as one living unit in a multifamily, the multifamily would pay more because of that one and a quarter percent.
Thank you.
It, it's just that oftentimes, because those multifamily units are smaller, they don't have the same market value.
Gotcha.
You know what I mean? So it's a bit of a wash.
Okay.
Kaylee Smith, six oh seven, Twelfth Street, North. Really sorry, I didn't listen to any of that, so I apologize. I listened to a lot of it, but that last bit, sorry. Okay, so is the TIF amount a set amount, or does it change annually with inflation and things like that? So it's a set amount, so this is the amount that it's gonna be.
That two point four million contract, that's the number, yep.
Okay. And then is the TIF also covering the infrastructure of the roads and the sewers as part of that? Or like with this new Thirteenth Street going through, is that all included?
The developer is paying for all of that upfront.
Okay.
City's not paying for any of that, at least not directly. The way the city's paying for it indirectly is by giving them these reimbursement payments with those future property taxes.
Okay.
So it, to get to your question, the city's not fronting any costs here.
But we're paying for it, just not right now.
Right, over time, based on those new property taxes, correct.
Okay, and is that increase going to be over fifteen, seventeen, twenty-six, those are the three numbers I could do? Or is that, like, how is that?
Up to fifteen payments.
I mean, our portion. I mean, all right, so I, my backyard is gonna be, I think retaining walls, what I heard. What is that going to do to our taxes? Like this TIF is gonna help out the builder because he's given a deal. So what are my taxes gonna look like? Are they gonna go down, are they gonna go up? My, my property value is gonna decrease, so like.
That, that's, that's an argument I can't make one way or the other, but all I can say is that your property taxes, based on there being the existence of a TIF on a pay-as-you-go basis, won't change at all.
Okay, so we'll pay for it eventually, but my property taxes won't?
I can answer that. You are actually not paying for this, because these new property taxes are coming from these homeowners. These new homeowners are paying for it. They're the ones that are, we're using their property taxes to reimburse the developer for the upfront cost. We're not using your taxes to reimburse the developer.
So, okay.
If that clarifies.
I'm bad with numbers myself, like you said, you can't do, I can't do numbers in my head.
We don't have to do numbers, but we're just concept.
As long as my questions might help clarify for other people and people of the board, but I'm okay with that. What surrounding communities for Cassin have done a TIF successfully? And do we have, like, examples that we are able to look at within the community?
Dog Center has done TIF districts, Byron.
I know you said, like, the, um, Prairie Meadows, I mean, like, the same kind of complex.
For townhomes?
Yeah.
Sure. Well, my hometown of Spring Valley, the, the TIF is gone now, but we did all sorts of, we did a combo development. If you ever go through Spring Valley, there's a grocery store right on the main drag. And behind it are some larger single-family homes, and then surrounding that are a bunch of townhomes. That was all TIF.
Okay. And then let's say, God forbid, they go bankrupt. Who, what happens with that then? Then you guys cover all that money and it doesn't, the TIF money?
No, because if, if, if someone is not in place to verify that that the number of units are being reserved, that are income compliant, for instance, they're not, if there's no one
Right.
staying up, we just quit paying.
So halfway through a construction project, if he goes bankrupt, so never mind, then we just have, is that on the city to clean up and everything?
No, because they're not fronting anything. If he shells out the money to build all those roads.
If he stops then, and he's gone.
Yep.
So then would, would the TIF money help clean that up still?
Clean, I don't know what you mean by clean it up.
Let's say he's building a house, he gets two walls done, and he says, I'm done, and he leaves.
Oh, I see.
Does the TIF finish those two walls on the roof? Or does the city, or who would be responsible if something were to happen to him and his business? We don't know how the economy works, right?
Well, that would, that would basically be the same answer as whether there was a TIF or not a TIF. If, if a development was occurring and somebody was the default with their, you know, their bank and so forth, who's responsible for finishing the house? It's not usually the city that comes in and does that.
Sure, okay. I think that's all my questions.
That'll be between the developer and the bank.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Johan Marsland, seven oh three, South Fork Place. I'm just wondering, what is an approximate value to the city of the roads, water, sewer that the developer is going to be putting in that will eventually be a benefit to the city? Can anybody estimate how, how much, what's the value of the road, which is gonna obviously have, gonna connect up somewhere? The value of our water and sewer lines that are gonna be put in by the developer to connect their properties? How much value is the city getting for the TIF district financing?
Do we know, what's the plan spent, Troy? Do you think it's, or how much is the project? I don't know.
Well, to answer the question, fairly on the water and sewer, that'll be going out to bid. But we have an estimate, with everything with estimate, this phase is approximately twelve and a half million. Truthfully, I don't have the answer. I would have to go back to, I don't even wanna guess, there's so many numbers.
Well, right, until you get your estimates or your bids in, I suppose. But he's saying he's estimating twelve and a half million for the first phase, or is that for both phases?
That's for the first phase.
For the first phase.
So are you asking about how much money was gonna be spent on the projects, or the benefit to the?
Yeah, not the project itself, but the city is going to have benefit in that we're gonna have roads we didn't have before. We're gonna have water sewer lines we didn't have before. Those roads are quite expensive, especially if we're connecting them up into a feeder line. What is the direct value that we're getting out of this? Obviously, it's not gonna be the whole project, but it's a significant amount of money. And I just wonder, you know, you know what approximate value for building a road per block? Approximate value for building your water sewer, how much, what is that value?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm confused on what the value is. I mean, the sewer and water lines are built to serve the developments going on.
Right, right, yeah.
I'm, I'm not gonna flush anything through those pipes.
No, no.
So the value to the.
But it is a city water and a city sewer service that we would've otherwise had to put in.
Sure, right, so there's, the benefit comes in is.
I think there's avoided cost, so we're not, we're not gonna gain that cost. And I don't know what that number is, we'd have to do some research on it, Johan, we can't answer it to the off-the-top of our head.
You're looking at the revenue?
The benefit is on the ratepayers for the sewer, water, and electric, because we've had a lot of complaints about bills lately. And every ratepayer that we add is a direct benefit to everybody in town, that those, the sewer plant costs can be spread over more people. I'm just, there's the value.
Yeah, you don't, we don't usually think in terms of value when it's the road and utilities, because that, long range, those are our costs, right? Because they need to be maintained, and, but the value is the tax base and the utility users and the monthly bills. Tax base, you know, I showed you the one chart where it said it could be potentially two points on the tax rate. But then the water sewer users, that's hard to calculate, because you'd have to guess on what's the average usage, what's the average bill? But you could see where that add up to quite a big number.
Brandon, you may have something on that?
Yeah, I think, maybe to their point, Johan, the city's kinda made a stance that development pays for development, so in a perfect world, we don't have to worry about Thirteenth Street, right? So we develop the right way from fifty-seven over to Thirteenth, and every developer built his or her incremental phase, and then they all paid for their own redevelopment, paid for development. So there is really no cost or value in that. There is maybe a value in looping some water lines. But again, if every developer is building his or her phase, then it all gets kinda built out. There could be some value having Thirteenth Street, because that may lessen traffic in other areas on requiring Thirteenth Street to be constructed from a traffic perspective. areas on requiring 13th Street to be constructed from a traffic perspective.
So, my point to that, I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, but my point to that is that every development that is made, the city gains value, because somebody put in the utilities that we would otherwise have to. If we wanted to develop an area without a developer doing it, we would have to pay for that road, those water lines, those sewer lines. The city would, if the city decided it wanted to develop. We have a policy, we let the developers pay for it. I'm just asking, what's the value we're getting?
What's that, 12 million?
12 million dollars.
Yeah, or just strictly...
Just for the water sewer and the roads and that, 12 million dollars.
If you'd ask me if you took raw land to get it developed in single-family houses, I'd say about $50,000 a lot. So, imagine you had to buy land, invest $50,000 in per-residential house, want to make some profit, that's why we're $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 a lot.
So, it seems like a pretty good return. Thank you.
Thanks, Johan. Anyone else?
Can I just ask, is the developer also the owner of the property? Will he hire Lloyd Management, or will somebody else buy this property from the developer?
As of right now, they're the owner. That's my understanding, isn't it, Troy?
Yeah.
Yep.
There is a provision in the contract that it, should the developer want to sell it all to somebody else, they can do that, but we don't have to transfer the tax increment benefit to the new owner unless they come and request it of the council first.
Now, your comment made me think that there was somebody else that was going to actually be the owner, because you said the developer doesn't pay the tax and the owners do. And so, that's why I thought maybe there was...
Yeah, through their rent, yeah, ultimately, the owner is going to pay the tax, though.
The developer is going to pay the tax.
But it's coming out of the rents they're collecting from the people, so, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anyone else? Not you yet. We'll be done shortly. Anyone else in the public? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, but just wait a little bit, we'll open another one about the budget. So, with...
No one ever talks about the budget.
All right, so, from the council, any questions for Mike?
I thought it was a good presentation. Thank you, Mike. Every time you come, it's very insightful and informative for us. Thank you.
I was liking that.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. That was very good explanation.
So, I thought I lost all of you, so, thank you.
No, no. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the resolution conditional upon, obviously, the whole TIF thing is conditional upon everything else getting approved, correct?
Can I make a comment on that?
Yep.
There may be some value in approving the TIF district, even if this project doesn't get approved, simply because then you have it established so that if something else happens, it's a different developer, it's already in place, you don't have to bring me back, we can just do an administrative amendment, whatever. What you could do is just wait on approving the contract.
We can approve the agreement, but not the contract.
You can approve the TIF plan.
The plan, okay.
And just not approve the contract.
Okay.
And then, and then later, if you decide you didn't like that idea, you can always decertify the TIF district.
Okay.
At any time.
So, we can approve the plan, but we're not approving the contract until we actually get the project approved, if it gets...
Yep, yep. And then, when we have the final details, so like when Troy removes some of those numbers of homes and redoes everything, then we can have that contract updated, because right now, I showed 54 townhomes in Phase One and Phase Two, and that might change based on...
Okay. I amend my motion to propose to approve the TIF plan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks. Stand, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Do you want to take a quick break? We'll take a quick, two-minute break for... Just for me, just by off the side here.
No one up there.
And the mics are still live, everybody, so...
Anything else tonight?
Oh, we just got the budget. Thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Thank you.
Hey, congratulations on retiring.
Thank you.
I've always wanted.
I had to go work out.
That's my, that's my... I'm shivering. I'm light.
Ian, okay. So, when I was, I wasn't back, and I was just...
I know. I think you did it. You know, you don't have your presentation.
Yeah, what's your comment?
I put in for a better project, I know that crap, but I said, I put in for a better one. And I said, good standing. Honey, you can give me a project.
Thanks for coming.
There. Hey, it's been great working with you. I'm sad to see you go. Who, does anybody hear me coming there, or is it somebody else? Oh, my God. Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Right here, right here. Thanks, Mike. I got a call, I got another project we're working on. No, I admit, for, that's numbers the other, so, they're on some rates for us. I got to talk about PFA. Well, we're not going to do PFA, we're going to bond the locals, you got more work too, so... If they have any money, they're going to do it. We might still be sick some money, three months, one month, but the, there's no state plan, they didn't pass a bonding bill, and they can't win.
If you took five units out of there, then it brings it down four per acre.
I got a call, I got some numbers, we just need to know what the rates are, and then talk about bonding. It's going to be better, because our construction costs your way down.
Because it's 29...
Costs a lot. I'm worried about 50 million, I'm worried about 40 million, I've got 2 million left to buy. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I got new numbers, so I'll just send them to you. Yeah. Yeah. Thanks for coming. No, no, the mayor's done. Oh, I thought he said he was retiring. I would retire right now, so, I gotta wait till Matt's here.
I picked my name.
Oh, sorry. I was cheering for Ohio State, I can tell you that much. I'm a Michigan fan, so, yeah. All right, never mind. That's a different effect. I have the highest level of confidence in the city. Future land use has that... Because they were still in the threshold of the road that's going to reach, and now they're at this level, which is... As it fell in the forming zone, because it was... Our one, I'm hoping I don't throw it, but it's three. Until 2004, I'm expecting a lot, because then we can't build multifamily. Yeah, thank you for responding. The density as a whole, because there's a bunch of green spaces, the density was vulnerable to not have a...
Stop and clicker, that's what they're calling it.
I got knocked over by a nine-year-old and had a living room tear, and a bike that...
Yeah, I did, yeah. I have the shot next Friday, and then the work...
I wish.
We will want to, because just...
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order.
Gavel for first and last time.
I've done that before. I've never used it. I didn't even have to throw it tonight or anything.
Yeah. I said for the first, first and last time.
All right, thanks for coming, everybody. Oh, this is my favorite part. All right, so, we're going to go ahead and get the meeting back going, and we got a buzzin', buzz it, budget presentation from Tim.
Sure. Ready? Yep. Ian, would you mind running to this is...
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, we agreed on the TIF plan and the TIF agreement, we don't need to make any formal decision on yet?
Because that was the contract, right?
Yeah.
So, I'm looking at E1C. Did we cover that, then?
Yeah, you approved the, you approved the TIF plan. Yep. But not the contract. So, the contract will have to come back, and that was the recommendation.
Okay, okay. That was, so we kind of did both of these things.
We did what we needed to do. So, we created a TIF district tonight.
Yep.
If this project moves forward, or another project, for that matter, we'll have a contract with that developer at that time.
Okay, so the contract here is kind of just like, here's a reference contract, that will get filled in later.
Well, I mean, if you chose to move through the contract tonight, you could have.
Okay, okay.
But the choice was to create the district and...
Because those numbers are going to change.
Is a lot of things changing? It seems like it makes sense to...
Okay, so the B, the resolution for the plan, and the, basically kind of like tabling the TIF agreement until later, was done in the one vote, the single vote?
Yeah, didn't take any action on the TIF contract.
Contract.
Okay, I understood.
The TIF plan is approved. I understand, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you for making sure it was done correctly. All right, budget. Tim? Sure. And I will say, if you bring that up, Ian, thank you very much for your help tonight. You're a pro at the clickering, and I mean that truly. But the, some of these items, you've seen many times before, more for the public, which thankfully Candy is going to, she's here tonight, and she's going to tell me exactly how I did it, right or wrong. I also appreciate that Sarah's here tonight. She stayed through the whole meeting, because she wanted to see her first special meeting, and I told her, you don't have to stay, don't do it, but she did anyway, so... The pillars of our Casson financial plan are made for those components, you can go to the next slide. We do take a lot of input. We took a lot of input from council, and I've had a number of members of the public talking to me about different things they're concerned about or interested in. We have a lot of capital spending next year, and that's something that you're, the council, are all very cognizant of. Next slide, Ian. I will also say that I have continued to tweak the budget even up until today, so the numbers that are included when this packet was created are slightly changed. So, this spreadsheet here, it's, the numbers we'll be looking at approving are slightly lower. So, I think right in there, you have, I think I had that at seven, just about 7%, which is slightly less than our preliminary levy. Preliminary levy was 7.2%. Some, we had some increased costs right away. We went from 7.2 to eight, because we had an increase in the healthcare that came in like three days later, so we actually went up. So, we went up, and we've come back down now by cutting a variety of things, and some of those are related in there. Just want to go through some of the expenditure detail. On the next slide, you can see, as council's aware, we have some increases, substantial increases. This year is a benefits and salary year. We try not to do benefits and salary and debt service in the same year, because obviously it's a big punch. Last year, we had a good benefits and salary year, because we had a really low number coming in this year, but we had a big jump in the debt service with the fire hall. This year, or 2025, there's the COLAs for IBW and the COLAs for the police, as well as the steps that are there. Health insurance came in pretty substantially high. I just mentioned, talked about very slightly the increased revenue for utilities there. We are estimating some decreased fuel costs. Now, that is a, an estimate. It is not a for sure, but based on the trend and what we're seeing and what we're hoping for, we're going to forecast for that. That's going to help us reduce those numbers slightly. Debt service isn't going to change very much, a little bit of a change, but not a lot there. If you go down to some of the debt service projects we're looking at for next year, just so you know where capital is, we do have a lot of big projects coming. So, we know that the next couple of slides just cover those. You know, we're looking at over $8 million potentially of debt service and a lot of new payments. I just included, so, as I said, a lot of this is more for the public consumption, you guys have seen a lot of this before, but just want to know where the money is going to be going next year, that where are you spending? It's going to be for capital. Included some of that capital planning, too, in there to show what we're doing. We are forecasting a population gain to continue to grow. I think we were at 7,200 this summer, and the forecast is, we're really trending towards the 9,000 at the 2030 mark, depending on how things go over the development. See some of those capital items tonight, you can see some of the bigger capital spend items that we're looking at, including some items for the parks. And I've also included some slides in there on why property taxes change year to year, and that's, as I said, more for public consumption. Also included some, included some statements. These are actual statements, or not, they're proposed taxes, and just to show the impact to some, some properties, whether they're personal property, rather, they are commercial or residential, you can see the impacts that were, were actual to the statements. So, then you can see on the last couple of slides there, a comparison of the year-over-year taxes. As you can see, from 2020, the trend in Casson has been down. Taxes are lower now than they were on the $350,000 house than they were in 2020. That tax rate has come down significantly, as Mr. Bubani's slides show, we're down to 57%. Should be more like 55% next year of the tax rate. So, the forecast there is a positive, and there's just some questions for, you know, the public, so they know kind of where we're at. We're at that process right now, where we're going to finalize the levy tonight and then submit a final levy to the, to the county. So, you're all aware of it, you've, you know, seen a copy of the budgets also included in there, the PDF. As I said, right now, I've got a budget that is running at an increase of $285,154. That's a 6.78%. And, you know, I'm open to, you know, feedback from the public, if there's public that'd like to step up during our public hearing, or if there's questions from the council itself, as I said, I continue to try to tweak that. There are some things in there, we're doing some early spends, like the Park Modular or things like that, that are big-ticket items that we're spending this year. And the other item that's sort of outstanding is the Dodge Center ambulance money, which was added in. That's about a percent of our levy that, you know, is up to the council, what you want to do there, if you'd like to preserve that, or if you'd like to make some changes there.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Questions for Tim on the presentation, before we open it up for public comment?
Just on the slide, on the page with the 2023 year, for that comparison of the smaller
smaller cities around us, Bloomington, Byron, you know, there was a comment made that our taxes are quite higher than all the surrounding cities around us, bigger cities. I mean, it looks, when you look at forty-eight-hundred for a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, we're one of the second, or the second lowest besides Manorville.
Yeah, and I do like to, I like to see this because I'm, I live in town, I'm a taxpayer. So it's important for me to ask to remain competitive.
So how, how we advertise that to people and say, hey, we're, you, they seem high to you, but look what's around you.
Send them a letter so they get mad about something and come to the meeting and then spring the budget conversation.
They all left.
No, I know, basically, we're gonna go over the exact same thing, but, you know, it's a fact, and it's not a fact. It's just opinions that perpetuate on the internet. And all of a sudden, the top of the meeting, so everybody has to solve them. I almost did move it to the front, but I didn't wanna.
That slide really runs home to me because that, like, we can't complain about the things that we have when it's actually not that bad. It makes it look worse, and I wish we, I wish we did a better job saying, hey, we have it pretty good here. This is a great town, we have great schools, we have great public works, we have a lot of great things happening, and for the price you're paying, the only place you're paying less is Manorville, and I've lived in Manorville. I moved back to CASN. All I'm gonna say about that.
There's still room for improvement because we can still be in Manorville.
Oof. I don't know, man.
Theirs is going up quite a bit next year.
Yes, it is.
Their levy went up significantly, so we probably will be for the Manorville.
We are trying very hard to, to hear people and make changes, but let's recognize them too. Celebrate them.
And the feedback's good, so. Anybody else got questions for Tim before we open up to the public?
Thank you for doing that work.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing to hear feedback on the budget. Anybody got anything? I know, I know, I know, I'm getting the signal out there that it's time. Um, okay, all right.
Maris, two oh four, fourth hour.
Okay, thank you. We will, uh, close the public hearing. Um. Anything else council has before we, before I share my ten, fifteen, twenty-five cents?
I think we've been doing good at trying to keep it in line. Appreciate staff working hard on it and council working hard on it.
Yes. Thank you. Anybody else? Paul, anything?
Good. Okay, um, I've debated this quite a bit over the last three weeks, um, but I think it's something that needs to be said, um, and thrown out there, not as a threat or even something I would fully support, but I think the conversation needs to be had about our relationship with Dodge County and the city of CASN, probably on many fronts, but mainly on law enforcement. And Chief, don't take this the wrong way because you know I support you a hundred percent. Uh, but I sent an email to the sheriff when we got word that they're not gonna, they don't wanna process our citations anymore. Fine, you know, the, the email I got, communication, whatever, it could be up to twenty hours a week, and I'm thinking, all right, it's November, we've already done our budget, where do we find point five FTE to do that? So I got a little irritated. Um, did a data request from the county for some, uh, tax information for all the municipalities and townships in Dodge County, sheriff's budget, the different things, you know. So if we look at 2024 taxes collected, we paid two-point-six-million dollars to the county from the city of CASN residents, fifteen percent's the Dodge County sheriff's budget, so that's three-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand dollars we pay the sheriff's department. Residents of Dodge County, we should get coverage just like everybody else. From January of twenty-three through October of twenty-four, Dodge County responded to four-hundred-and-fifty-seven calls in the city of CASN on assists or calls they did on their own from the email the chief sent me. Um, you know, over the years, you know, I've asked questions, we've had the conversation, you know, can we get, you know, what would it cost for us to get some county coverage to work together, or whatever it might be? We've had conversations about the SRO program, where the county provides the officers with the schools at the other two school districts in the county, but when the deal with, uh, the Zed Building and when the school board was looking at, hey, how could we save some money? And they even explored the idea was that we didn't want the SRO, which was not what anybody wanted. They were just trying to look to see how we can work together. And we're explicitly told every time, you know, we're not gonna cover the city of CASN. I said, well, what if we pay you? You know, we're not gonna cover the city of CASN. You have to do the SRO, you have your own department. So my email to the sheriff, who I, I like dearly, um, it's not personal, but, you know, I said, city of CASN in my estimation has three options moving forward with law enforcement. That's the status quo, uh, which is, you know, forty percent of our levy, which is fine because we have a safe community and I think it's, it's worth every penny, um, to make some cuts and ask the county to make up some of that by paying them, or we just eliminate our police department and the county doesn't have a choice but to cover the city of CASN, because by state statute, they'd have to. Um, I'm not saying I'm gonna make a recommendation to eliminate the police department, which I was going to do last week, but I have thought twice about it, about making that recommendation. But there's gotta be a way we can work together, because we are citizens of Dodge County as well. Um, I think we need the press for better communication, that if they're not gonna provide a service they're already doing, we need more than six weeks' notice, because that's not fair to our chief and our staff member who's gonna be processing those citations. I also believe that if we're gonna process the citations, we should get the fees that come along with that to reimburse for the processing, which is not data you can request from the county, you got sent to the state, I don't really know how we're gonna get that information, but I'll follow up on that. So my, my, my recommendation to the county is that we need to have some good dialogue with Dodge County Sheriff's Department, and that through negotiations this year and three years ago when we did negotiations, the writing on the wall is that small community police departments are gonna be very difficult to staff. Look at the trouble we have staffing, you know, every time, we used to post a position, you'd have thirty, forty applicants. Now we don't. You know, is there a way that we could work together with the sheriff's department so we're giving better coverage to not only CASN, but the whole county? Because from that period of time when I mentioned that Dodge County responded to four-hundred-and-fifty-seven calls in the city of CASN, who are also Dodge County residents, who paid three-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand dollars of the sheriff's department budget in one year, the city of CASN police, which they should, responded to four-hundred-and-four agency assist calls outside of the city of CASN, two-hundred-and-sixty-three to assist Dodge County, at which the city of CASN residents paid a hundred percent of that bill. We don't bill anybody for that assist, and we shouldn't, because I think our law enforcement should have each other's back. If you're the first one that can be there, you should be there. That's what our jobs are. I'm not saying I don't like that or don't want that, but in all fairness, we're footing a hundred percent of that bill. Fine, we want our neighbors to be saved too, but then when it comes down to this little back and forth, you know, now we're not gonna process citations, now we're gonna, the records requesting that you're gonna change that program that came in last second, back in August or September, whatever, I just think we need the press for, where the emergency services reaches out to the sheriff's department and says, hey, let's have some dialogue so we can plan this stuff ahead of time. That's all I'm gonna encourage the council to do, and if you need my help with that after the first year, I'd be happy to help with it. But, um, since I brought it up, I can't really say that and then not help. But that's all I'm gonna say about the budget. It's forty percent of our levy, right? So, I mean, that's a big chunk of what we levy to taxpayers, forty percent is for the police department. Again, worth every penny, but it, as we raise that budget every year, if we're gonna be taking on more of the stuff that the county's been doing, and maybe the county shouldn't have been doing for us first, I don't know all that, because sometimes I just can't get the information when you ask for it. So, um, so that's all I'm gonna say about that, but just as you're doing budgets going forward, talk about law enforcement. I think as a whole, between our department and the county, we could probably do better for all our residents of Dodge County and the city of CASN if we work together and pool their resources, because I'm sure they have the same hiring issues that we do, and if we had more communication together, maybe it would work better. And I could be completely wrong, so that's all I have to say about that. Any questions?
I don't disagree. In fact, it kind of annoys me how much taxes we pay and we get just next to nothing from the county, um, in terms of the policing. Um, I don't know what we can do about it, so I'm glad you're leading that.
Yeah, you know, and it just, you know, and I, and I understand things are different in small towns, you know, we're, we're the metro area in Dodge County, right? So we're, we're the Minneapolis-St. Paul of Dodge County, because we're the population center, we're the wealthiest city in the county, you know, so we're, we have kind of a little different dynamics, like I always complain that outstate Minnesota gets the short end of the stick on education, LG, all the other stuff too, so we're, we're the big boy on the block in this. But my question's always been, like Dodge Center pays three-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand dollars a year for direct coverage from the county, that means the county deputies are there covering them for whatever period of time that is. And I've always asked, I said, well, how many officers is there and what's the coverage? We'll pay for whatever the coverage and write you a check. We aren't gonna cover CASN, is always the answer. So, you know, my conversation or my email, the short one, was, you know, I think that our path going forward is to status quo, do some cutting or elimination, which I'm not in favor of, but if there was a way to preserve our department longer, to have community policing in the city of CASN, if we could have some kind of a hybrid contract where we pay for direct policing from the county to cover certain hours in the evenings and that type of thing, and we had our community police folks that are here interacting with the community when everybody's awake and during the day, is, is that a better model going forward? I mean, I don't, I don't know, but I think it's worth exploring, and if it could save everybody a few dollars, but, you know, we can still have the same coverage or better, why not? And put a little less stress on our police department, I would be all in favor of that. So. Anybody else have any questions?
Don't feel like we're punished for having a police department.
Little bit, but, I mean, again, how do you put a price on protection, right? You know, it's, it's like an insurance policy. No one likes to pay the insurance policy until they need it, then it was cheap. So, again, I'm not saying I don't think it's worth it, I don't, I don't like it, but just the writing on the wall is the cost of maintaining a separate department is gonna be a big burden going forward, and I would just hate to see it get to a point where it gets so frustrating that whoever the council is five years, ten years, twenty years from now just says, you know, we just can't do it anymore, we're done. You know, that, that, that'll be the worst-case scenario for the community. So I think if the conversation starts, it might be a very long process, but I don't know, yeah, I could be wrong, but it, it's gonna be difficult for small police departments to, to maintain. So. With that, any other questions on the budget? Okay, entertain a motion to approve the levy as presented?
So I'll just read off the numbers.
Yes, yes, sir.
So we'd be looking at a total levy of, uh, four million, four-hundred-and-nine-two-thousand-and-forty-seven dollars, which is a two-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollar increase over the previous year.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Ryan, do I have a second? Thanks, Mel, inherent discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Um, mayor's report?
I don't know, I think I already said what I had to say. Couple of things I'll just go back to, the couple of comments we heard today on some of the feedback, which is, everybody's opinion is respected, you know, the, I would just suggest if anybody has any concerns about, you know, overcrowding at school, send them to Mr. Ennis, the superintendent, he can have a conversation on them, because it's, it's totally not the truth. We're a section down in kindergarten this year, enrollment's down, so it's, it's, that's not an issue. The whole argument of, you know, bringing in business first and then housing, that's the opposite that we hear from businesses over the last eight years. It's like, we'd love to move our little manufacturing company to CASN that employs forty people, but we need a place for our people to live. So I get the, I get what, it makes sense, right? Hey, build the business first and then the housing, but if the people aren't here, the work there, they aren't coming. So I just don't know what we've actually heard. Um, and then as far as the one comment about the city's trying to lower home values in the city, that's probably opposite of what we're really intending to do. I mean, I don't, lowering home values doesn't do anybody any good, homeowners or the city, so, um, I would just, I would have to disagree with that. So with that, um, fee schedule.
Okay, including your packet, you have an updated fee schedule, uh, with some redline additions. The biggest change is we're looking at utilities, um, and I will say that, that right now the electric, uh, department is undergoing its fee schedule, or it's, rather, its rate study. So this would be an interim rate that we're suggesting at sometime in the next year, probably in the next six months, probably early next summer, we'll have that, um, rate study completed, and at that time we'll have recommendations. We may look to implement those, um, at normal time at the end of next year, we may implement it early depending what the council wants to do. Um, so these are the changes that are included in your packet tonight. Um, if there's any questions, we're glad to take those. If you're interested in approving it tonight, you're certainly welcome to, otherwise we could approve on the eighteenth as well.
The question I have is, you've got the new rate, could you get us the old rate?
Sure, and that's, that's an oversight on my part. I started to put the old rate schedule in there too, but it didn't end up getting put in, so.
Just that way we know, you know, it just shows.
How much it changed.
We can email out that old rate schedule and if you do that.
I'd just like to look at that before I would approve it.
Awesome.
So we'll move that to next week then?
Yeah, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody? We'll, we'll table it to next week?
Yes.
Uh, new business platted road release request?
So this is something that, uh, Mr. Cohenhofer from the, uh, the county engineer, he had sent over, included his email as well, it's just a little map he had sent. They are looking at, uh, with the acquisition of that land on the north side, as you're cognizant of it, and there's up on the screen now too, um, you're familiar with those parcels that they acquired from Mr. Shutey. Um, they're also asking us to, uh, basically give those sections back to the county. They like the road right of way that was established previously along Highway Fifty-seven as well as that baggage road. Uh, we know that was, um, something that they gave us for the building of that, we're not planning on building that this time now because of the change in, in composition of ownership, so, um, we don't have a problem looking at that. If there's any feedback, we would like to know if we'd like to include that other section that's, uh, tashed in the red. We feel like as a staff level that would be prudent to return all of those, uh, right-of-ways at the same time, however, that's up to the council.
Why would the county want us to leave that zone in the red? So, because they wanted, they, they, if they're taking back the rights to get to the property the other way, why would we wanna leave that? I mean, if they wanted access.
That's part of the reason we're, we're feeling like it should all be just returned at this time. Um, you know, we can have Mr. Cohenhofer maybe come, well, in order to do this, we would have to vacate, we would hold a vacation hearing, that would be something that would be provide notice to the folks around there, and, and we would have a public hearing at that time if the council would want to move forward with that. I don't know, Brandon, if you want to, you have a little.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify one thing. Um, so we have MINDOT right of way, which obviously Fifty-seven's on, you see we have a yellow strip that's additional, uh, which would be like a frontage road, uh, was planned, and then you can see the little stubs into, um, that area to the west there that's also being vacated. So to your point, if you were to vacate, um, even that red area down there and all of the additional frontage that the city has, they still have access out to Fifty-seven, right? It's because they're still touching a public right of way. It's just that we're vacating our little, um, potential frontage road, as I think was what was intended when that was plotted, so I don't see any concern with vacating it. Um, we could actually just vacate, um, the stuff that's going into the lot and leave it as public right of way and have, have it for MINDOT's use. If they ever wanted to widen it, maybe the only thing to maybe think about, just because we have it as right of way, so it doesn't get vacated at a later time if there was ever a expansion of Fifty-seven, but, uh, we could also vacate it and let MINDOT figure it out too.
If we vacate it, is that red area, are we plowing that currently?
Yeah, absolutely. We had previous conversations with those property owners about that, um, area. Uh, we built it per what they wanted, there's two residential properties there. Um, the argument or discussion was, um, is it a shared driveway or is it a public right-of-way that's vacated? And I think they even said, well, if you're not gonna maintain it, vacate it, I think was even the discussion.
Yes.
So, but the council direction at that time was, um, the public works plow, which they traditionally have, um, or had, I think they are still doing that to continue what they traditionally done. And my point of argument, uh, was, well, we have shared driveways all through town, your driveway ones are not plowed by public works, why would this one be plowed? But that's a council discussion and decision.
So if we vacate it, that's over with and done with.
Uh, as far as I'm concerned, yeah. You, there's no, it's probably now private property, so you're not allowed to enter private property and move, no.
There's no reason for us, the city, to main, to keep that.
Backside of the road.
There's no purpose there.
Yep.
I have no problem with vacating it.
Yep.
And then the other parcel, the other back of the road, I think that that was conveyed to us, I think we can just convey that back at the same meeting. I don't think there's gonna be a public hearing for that, we just convey it back to the county.
The county acquired all of that.
Yep, they gave it to us, I think we're gonna give it back to them, but we just need to call a public hearing, so I guess staff can work on that or have the county get the documents, and we'll call the public hearing.
What do I got for that?
Any other questions on that, or?
Yeah, I would just like to say, um, in regards to, um, this red hatched area, the county engineer said they would like to see the parcel remain in holding as it has future value as an alternative access for the neighboring parcels and to the county property for emergency purposes.
Can we vacate it to them? Let them vacate it?
So, well, let me, let me finish, please.
I'm sorry.
Um, so what I don't understand is, one, there are no neighboring properties, right? Because the, the two properties on the north and south would just gain that property to themselves, so there would not be a need for alternative access for neighboring parcels.
Well, they're thinking their property.
Secondly, we've got two more further up Fifty-seven that is further away from our roundabout that would probably be better for a traffic standpoint if they ever decided they wanted access again. Wouldn't it be better to have less turns in a short span if they did wanna have access for their back parcel? Like, it would make more sense to me to keep the northernmost right of way and then vacate everything else if they really wanna have access to county property for emergency purposes. But I'm also okay with just vacating all of it, because I don't like just holding stuff with no plans for it.
You can answer, but probably gonna be the state granting access to there, right?
Yeah, you just, they would have to permit the driveway access in addition to that, and that right of way, existing or non-existing, is irrelevant of that, because they, if they vacate it, now our right of way would become county property, in turn, there would be a budding MINDOT right of way anyway, if we vacate it all.
Right, but the fact that the red one there exists already means nothing, right? Because it's not a road, it's just a driveway.
Yeah, well, MINDOT may be a little different if we were to expand it and convert it from a driveway to a road, and that was part of our conversation, that helps us, that it exists today, and we're just upgrading it from a driveway to a road, but with the county's But with the county's intent to hold that land, um, as undeveloped, uh, as a buffer to the land, landfill, I don't think that that's an issue, right? That's what they're, that's why they bought it, so. I think it, the other, the other discussion of that is, MINDOT would tell us to go off a city road for access, which that's a contiguous parcel where they've built the entrance to the, uh, nature area there, um, that's, that's their access to the property, so MINDOT would use that, um, against granting the driveway to the north, is what I'd highly suspect from their asset management. So I, I think it's really non-issue, I think the issue for the council is whether or not those two private properties, we should be maintaining that or not.
Of course not, but, yeah, I mean, if, if we vacate it, can Dodge County then take over ownership of the right-of-way?
If it was dedicated, which I highly, yeah, was platted out, um, so that area in red would go to the two adjacent property, remember you vacate right-of-way...
Okay, so, so we can't vacate it to the county and be like, okay, it's yours now?
Correct, yep.
Is nobody do a transfer of right-of-way?
It's right next to their property.
Yeah.
Because it was right-of-way, so therefore it was deemed a public use, so therefore when it was platted, it was deemed as a public use, so if you vacate it, it goes back to the property, because the city didn't have a fee title.
And, and, the other two right-of-ways is just gonna return property to them. And that would then, if they needed access to the parcel behind it, it's their own property they'd have to access through, so... What, why would we need to hold something for them to have access to their property that they could just cut through their own property?
Agreed, yep.
I don't, I don't see any reason to hold any of this.
Is that a motion?
Uh, I can make a motion, I would make a mo, well, are we asking for a motion?
No, we're gonna call a public hearing.
Does everybody agree that we'll call a public hearing? I'm making a motion to have a public hearing to vacate this property.
There we go. Do we have to have a motion on that?
I don't.
Okay, but thanks for the motion, but we don't have to. Alright, all in favor of calling the public hearing to vacate this property, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you, everybody. City of Casson, quote for a pump.
Sure, I am, uh, I bring these to you, not because you, you don't like them, but because they're big, and I wanna make sure you guys know where we're spending your money. Uh, and we're gonna have a bigger one coming for a vac truck for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or something like that. So, um, it's that second one in there, it's about seventeen thousand, um, he's gonna get two of them, these are pumps that'll be replacing ones that are, uh, starting to fail. So we'll be spending about a little over thirty-four thousand dollars. If you'd like to go ahead and approve it, that's fine, otherwise it's part of their budget, I just want you to know, you know, we, we go over those numbers sometimes, and it's important for me to know that you are cognizant of the, the spend that we have there, so.
I see, thanks for letting us know it's part of the budget.
Okay.
Did, I'm sorry, did you say, did you say we're buying two pumps?
That's right.
So this is a quote for two pumps, and the total for both pumps is...
The second line there is seventeen thousand, those are the ones we're gonna be getting, so these are different options.
I was very confused looking at this.
No, that's why I've got in there, to let you know exactly what I'm talking about, so, yep, no, he had different options, and after reviewing those, that's what we're gonna be doing, is getting two of those seventeen thousand dollar pumps.
And these are gonna be backups, or are they gonna go in immediately when we get them?
Uh, one will go in immediately, and one will be a backup then.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Thank you. Ordinants on Cann, or anything else in your report?
Otherwise, you've got your report.
Okay.
If you have questions, we're getting, we're getting goofy here late in the night, so...
Cannabis ordinance?
Uh, just to let you know that Dodge County did, uh, they passed their ordinance, and the way they're gonna enforce it is they are gonna be pretty restrictive, and the way I read it is that we're not gonna be able to be any less restrictive than they are. Or they're not gonna let us, that's the state statute, at least that's what they're telling us. So, um, the thing that I do need from you is an idea of how many you would wanna authorize in the city of Casson, because that is totally up to you, whether you can authorize, or if we wanna just see what develops. Well, we do have to have a number in that ordinance that we have passed, so up to a certain number. The other thing would be, you know, distances, if you would like to have any other restrictions other than what the county approved in their ordinance, um, that are more restrictive than theirs.
Fifty.
Fifty.
Can I just, uh, play devil's advocate here for a second?
Sure.
If we were less restrictive than them, are they gonna send the sheriffs and enforce it?
That's a good question, and I don't know, so here's, in all seriousness, in all seriousness, I don't know. The, the lottery has failed at the state of Minnesota, if you've read...
Yes, miserably.
The state has, has no idea what it's doing. And now cities are passing ordinances to, because they wanna be ready by January, you know, I have kinda held off because I don't think that there's a need for us to be too aggressive on it, but...
You're looking subdivision four enforcement that says they can, you're partial as defined by law, so the county could come in, yes.
I think it says in there too that the county would be doing checks once a year.
Yes.
So, you know, the thing...
I was just being cheeky, wasn't I?
How many keep, how many permits or where we wanna authorize in the city? I think it'd be beneficial to the council if we take a map of Casson, and then you draw a little bubble circles around churches, schools, daycares, and everything else, and see where you could possibly have one in Casson.
Right.
Because it's gonna be very limited at where you could even have one.
Well, I mean, you could have them, I mean, for example, on fifty-seven, uh, there's a good number of, I mean, you could, because there's no reason you can't have one right next to another one.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, there's not gonna be a lot of places to have them.
You know, it has to be in certain areas, absolutely.
For our zoning, but then for...
But it's so far from churches, schools, daycares, because you got daycare on fifty-seven, church on fifty-seven. We keep it the same as tobacco, though, or is it further away?
We don't get to set the limits on it, it's a county.
If it's the same as tobacco, then QuikTrip could sell it, right? Theoretically, a smoke shop could.
So close to a daycare.
No, a smoke shop's pretty close to a daycare.
But if it's the same as tobacco, they sell tobacco at the daycare.
Yeah, but they're gonna follow it in.
Yeah, but they...
Because the daycare came on second.
Our liquor store can though, too, it could, and there is no way that they can stop that, if we choose to have... Because Kathy has expressed the want to do that.
So think about that for next week.
Yeah, I just, I'm looking for feedback, nothing, I don't wanna labor...
I mean, how many is really irrelevant, if it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen.
That's true.
One, two, whatever you wanna say, but...
I think we'd be, we do need to have a number, so, you know, it doesn't have to be overly restrictive.
In terms of this ordinance, so Tim, in summary, is this more restrictive than the one that we've kind of tossed around before?
It is more restrictive than what I was looking at, that's, that's correct.
People are going to still get it wherever they want to. Whether we make it the most restricted, we can, drag seven miles that way, they're gonna get what they want.
High school, get what I want. Anything else on that, we'll come back next week on that. Anything else, Tim, you got?
No, that's it for me.
Okay, alright, so think about a number for next week on that that we can fill in and get back to the county of how many we would authorize. Um, engineers report, make it real quick, um, did have a public meeting after we had our assessment meetings, which we had no comment, so I was, uh, interested to see what the citizens were gonna speak about at that meeting, but it was really positive.
Southwest, really no conversations concerned, or conversation about the assessment or the cost, they think the project needs to be done. Uh, just more access, because it's kind of a wonky area in town, it was kinda hard to get to, so when we tear all the roads up, it's gonna be, uh, something we're working on, we know we're gonna have to deal with it, so. We reached out to some owners, uh, property owners along fifty-seven, maybe some secondary accesses and shared access, I think, uh, we'll be working on that here as we wrap the plans up, so. All good there, uh, downtown, probably gonna have to talk to some of the property owners along there, um, that was good. I'm gonna talk to chief about, uh, some apartments there and long-term parking in that parking lot, we may have to work out, but I don't think that changes the needle on what we're doing, um, so work through that. The DNR trail in northwest, we did invite those property owners, we thought it'd be appropriate to let them know that the trail was coming in the parkland. Um, so there were some conversations about what parkland is, um, and yes, trails get built in parkland, and then it's our comp plan, which has a trail plan, and it's a DNR grant that we got, so, um, just some uncomfortableness of having a trail in their backyard and then it's parkland, but, um, clear that, it was a good meeting, so that's all I had. Any questions, have any to answer?
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Brandon? Okay, uh, anything from our attorney besides Yawn's? Um, any questions on correspondence? No, but everybody on the fishing report.
Yeah, good job, Paul, you didn't click at that time. Didn't even open it. I know, huh? Um, I looked, uh, no, um, I would like, future council when January hits, I know that's one of the things we look at is, who do we pick for our paper or in our different news outlets? I would like to look at moving from the DCI to Post-Bolton. As you can see, we again had another big meeting where the DCI did not show up. Um, the last two articles that they posted in the paper have been hit, hit campaigns on citizens, they were not kind to us when Tim was making some family choices. I just have a concern on how they're treating our citizens, and I think it's time we look into switching.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else got anything else? Alright, with that, entertain a motion for adjournment, we do meet, we do meet, just reminded, we do meet next Wednesday, we don't meet Christmas Day, so we do meet next Wednesday, so, we have a motion, have a second?
Say it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned, thanks, everybody.